Oh, Jeff, you must have turned it on.
Okay. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, June 9th at 7:30 PM in our board meeting room. I will keep my comments brief as we have a lot of work to do tonight. Just thank you to all the parents who continue to reach out. We are very appreciative. I know there's been a lot of questions around graduation and activities that are happening at schools. Just before this meeting, the first selectman invited Alan and I to a meeting tomorrow, which we will discuss lifting her executive order, which currently overlays our school orders, so we will keep you all up to date on that. Also, just a note for the public. There were some people posting on social media that there is a BOE@darianps.org email. There is not. That email will get sent back to people. Please, if you are looking to make public comment, go to publiccomment@darianps.org. We appreciate your patience during COVID, and we look forward to hearing from you. But I just don't want everyone sending emails and not realizing that BOE@darianps.org is not a public email, which we will receive. Again, you can always email the superintendent or myself or any board member as you see fit, and we will share those emails. But you can also email directly to publiccomment@darianps.org, and that will ensure that it goes to all of our inboxes. With that, I will move on. We do have some public comment, only one from the organization CDSP. It was in support of maximizing any pre-buying options with funds left over in this fiscal budget for FY '20. You should all have that in your public comment email. I note it because it is the only one we've received for this meeting, and it did come in today, just in case you haven't seen it. But I'd ask all board members to please read. And with that, we'll go on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. For those people who are online and board members who are able to participate, I trust everyone had a nice Memorial Day weekend. So, as the chairman just mentioned, there are a variety of activities planned for grades five, eight, and 12. And thank you to the parents who... Charlie, you just popped up right on the main screen there. Thank you to the parents and staff members for planning these events. The elementary one is scheduled for June 8th. Middle school is at June 10th. High school, it's a couple of dates, but primarily June 10th and 11th. And as the chairman said, we just need to make sure that we get the executive order, either modified, lifted, revised, otherwise. And the first selectman is trying to accommodate that. I know she really wants to try and accommodate that request. But until that is the case, communication from the schools to parents really can't take place until we know that and that we don't have to make any revisions to the actual schedule and to the events that are planned. I have shared some updates with the board regarding what those are, and they will be communicated to parents just as soon as we get the green light to go ahead. Summer school and ESY, and those are obviously have been on our minds. And just ahead of the last week, we got the guidelines for ESY and also for summer school. They are significant, to say the least. Essentially, with the health requirements that they ask for, the financials that they ask for, which is really over $100,000 in days on busin', probably, perhaps over $700,000 in amount of staffing we would actually need because we would have to double our another 50% more, custodial staff, PPEs, cleaning. I mean, it adds up to about $900,000. Given some of those logistics and safety and finances, it's my recommendation we don't go ahead with summer school in person. We will do it through e-learning. We will also do ESY through e-learning. I know Shirley and her staff will look at ways of accommodating, perhaps accommodating some assessments onsite or otherwise, and they will communicate that tomorrow. And we'll also have communication regarding the summer school. But that would include any of the sport programs that are part of the summer school in the afternoon. I'll stop there for a moment because there's sort of part two a wee bit because I want to be clear with some of the other community events, or perhaps maybe I'll just roll into. So if there are people who are in the queue at the moment, as they typically are, they are waiting now, just given everybody was waiting for the requirements. So if we have people who have used the facilities before, the athletic fields before or otherwise, we will continue to offer that to them if they abide by the rules and regulations that they need to in terms of any of the COVID guidelines that they have to accommodate. We also have Darian Youth Camps and the YMCA. They have actually been encouraged to run for to provide that daycare. Again, that's different than ourselves. They have a different set of rules to adhere to, and provided that those groups would adhere and sign off to primarily their early childhood guidelines, they're essentially the same thing, more than the same thing. For the most part, the camps have to adhere to the early childhood guidelines. So again, the restriction would have to be lifted, again, even for those things to take place. But that being said, we would be moving forward with e-learning for summer school for those students who would like to participate in that. And we will try and accommodate perhaps some lower numbers than we normally do in that capacity. We would also do the same for ESY, so that would continue in that capacity. And again, any outside organizations, if they're complying to their rules and regulations that they have to, they would be able to participate in the summer.
Okay, so I imagine there may be some more questions about it for board members, given that there are budgetary implications here. We can roll those questions into our discussion of the budget later.
AP testing went very well. I want to acknowledge the guidance staff under Meg's leadership, and also the students because it's a testament to both the staff and the kids that they reported that they felt so well-prepared. And there were some who had some technical difficulties, and they will be able to make that up, June 1 through 5. ACT officially, at least the last I heard over the weekend, is still not canceled. So remains to be seen whether they're going to actually try and do something in very small groups, but just have to wait and hear a little bit more. I want to say most of the students, most of our seniors took up the option for the senior class project. I would thank them for that, and the high school for organizing that. Strategic planning, get up and running again. Thank you to the members of the community who are looking in and who participated. We have had two meetings thus far. Actually, this one will kind this one. For those people here on the committee, they were asked to watch this presentation just as we discuss my entry plan report, because that will also feed into the work of the group. Afterage building committee continues to meet and to work on reducing the budget and try and get on track there. And again, we have, as reported by Mr. Deneen last time, that we have two phases to the project. One, it will keep the kids, which is a good thing for next year, it will keep the kids actually in the building for the full year, which is actually helpful. The task force continues to work on closing and reopening the school. I will say that the major focus has been recently on closing down schools, so we thank them for the work in that capacity tomorrow. I think all of our central services staff will be participating in a series of, this is the first of four of reopening your schools in Connecticut offered by Connecticut Center for School Change. I don't know if people have had the chance to get to witness some of the work this online remotely, the art show and the music honor society created a series of concerts. So they were all terrific. I hope one of the links didn't work, at least one of the ones I sent to you, so I'll resend that. And I just want to mention that our students in the principles of engineering have changed their curriculum a little bit, and that they're making masks for local first responders. I think that's a nice thing to be doing. And because of the closure, no testing, there will not be, I'm sure it'll break people's hearts, but there's no state accountability report for the upcoming year. With that, a little bit of thought.
Great. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. It's requested that the board approve the following minutes, minutes of our regular meeting held May 12, 2020. Deb, we'll just do, are there any objections? Hearing none, any abstentions?
Tara?
Yep.
You need someone to first and second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion for the minutes? Mr. Burksa moves in a second.
I do. Duke.
Mr. Deneen, seconds. Okay, and now I assume we will go with all in favor unless there are any objections. Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie, for keeping me honest on that one. We'll move on to board committee reports. Mrs. Ritchie?
So just quickly, just wanted everybody to know that the finance committee was able to meet on May 21st. Everybody on the committee was able to attend along with several other board members, and we reviewed the April results, which we will go into more detail tonight, but I'm glad that those meetings could resume. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Mr. Deneen?
Just a quick update to add to Dr. Adley on Ox Ridge. We did meet last Thursday on the 21st, the full committee. We did move forward, going with the new phase project, which keeps all the kids in the school as we start going down this path. And we worked for several hours on the value management line items. There are still some to come back to us that we'll have to review, but that's moving forward. We made good progress on looking at those items. There is also a second meeting with planning and zoning tonight around the overall approval.
Great. Thank you so much. I don't believe any other committees have met, so we will move forward to the superintendent's entry plan, Dr. Adley.
Well, again, I'm delighted and very proud to be able to speak before you this evening and share my entry plan report. No one told me when I came here that it would include closing schools down and reducing budgets of the challenge that we have, but such are the challenges that we face in the test. I would do want to recognize all those people who participated, from our students to our staff, to the parents, board members. My central service staff, a special shout out for many of them facilitated some of the meetings and some of the focus groups that took place along the way. So I thank them for that. And again, for anybody who actually participated in a number of ways through the process. So I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. I'll certainly perhaps slow down a little bit when we get to some of the key findings and those things. But the plan basically focused on strengths, challenges, and opportunities. For the purpose of this summary report, delineated in terms of strengths and opportunity, because for the most part, when we spoke of a challenge, it sort of manifests itself into an opportunity. So I sort of just decided just to structure it that way. And it's rather simple to read in many ways, because I think of anything, I think of the goals and basically documents and different things are pretty simple. If they're not pretty simple, nothing's going to happen for the most part. But anyway, my main purpose was to establish an open, honest conversation and communication, really understand the district, living in the district. And by the way, this is a little bit more than an 80-day, as you might tell here, an 80-day report out, and sort of collaboratively planned for the future with the staff and with the stakeholders. So again, thank you to the members of the community for your participation, and I should say for your warm welcome to the town, to the district, and your support during these trying days. The strategies were just simply three, to just listen and learn from constituents and stakeholders, to share and build just who I am, and share some things with the community back, numerous opportunities to do that, and then to take the data that we have and analyze it and report back, which is really what the scene is all about. Some of the entry plan events and activities that I shared at the start of the year, they started when I joined the students on the first day with the school bus. There's another thing I didn't think would be initially, school buses, but there you go. Transportation found its way into conversations throughout the year and actually into this document this evening. I'm not going to go through all of these activities, but suffice to say, there were focus groups, surveys that were administered in small group meetings. For the most part, in the elementary schools, I would meet with the kids over lunch. That was a simpler way to do that. With the older kids, I was at the high school's kids, I was able to meet with them in different groups in their classroom, and then groups of teachers and parents. So thank you for those who participated, those who facilitated. And I just sort of took the data from the different parts of that and sort of triangulated a little bit with the experiences that I was hearing, and also with the various survey results, observations, a review of documents, and sort of triangulated the data to come up as some themes. So with the students, the students are up. I should put this up. I apologize to my parents. Let me just, I've just gone ahead without pulling that up. No one told me that either. No one pointed that out, I think. You're very kind.
We're mesmerized.
That's what I would think, but great. Can someone just give me the go-ahead that you actually see what I'm seeing here? Are we good?
We're good.
All right, okay. So to those who, so those people who are watching, I apologize, but just, we're getting to the chase. So the first group was students, and clearly the students are, why we're here is why we exist, the heart and soul of the organization. I'm sure it's not a surprise to you that all our students reported, the groups of students are reported feeling safe and happy in their schools. And it's also not a surprise that students, even our very, very youngest students consistently express respect and appreciation for their talented current teachers. And in many ways, those are, the words are close to the words, even for the younger students that they use. Students expressed appreciation for teachers go the extra mile for them, and that they knew that they had a high-quality educational experiences. And they all said that they had different activities to do after school, during school, athletic extracurricular and co-curricular activities. I do say that the high school students, older students commented on the pressure to succeed, and also this conundrum, because simultaneously, it's sort of their pride and rise into those rigorous expectations. I also found when I went to the staff, I said, yeah, the staff's concerned about that, but they also took pride in reaching those levels and attaining those levels of achievement. So for our strength that our students reported out was the quality education that they received, the caliber of their teachers. Then, again, all of them, many of them spoke to teachers, just being available and doing whatever they had to do for the kids. There's a wide range of classes and extracurricular, excellent preparation for post-secondary. Students felt that they were well-prepared for college. I would also came back whenever kids came back from colleges and reported back out again. And clearly, there's a strong sense of blue pride in the time and a sense of spirit and community. Students also talked about individual learning needs or met, whether they were type of accommodations, accommodations through special services, or just needing extra help that was unsolicited feedback that was received. Opportunities that they talked about, they expressed we've got a frustration about access to Wi-Fi and a sort of consistent use of technology. We've actually talked about this, whether they use them in ninth grade or whether they use them in the 10th grade and the consistent use of them up and down the system. Increased student voice and communication regarding school policies. Older students I talked to, a lot of them had discussions about policies for 11th grade, policies for 12th grade, how they fact that they didn't know about it, which is not typical, but I'm just reporting the facts. They discussed the rigor and high expectations to succeed. Some of them, and others, making some connections to all of their feedback, talked about the sort of funding that went along with athletics, this sort of athletics versus other things, in this case, such as the arts. Are the arts as well funded as athletics? Is it equitable? They expressed an interest, very keen interest in continuing to do personalized learning, get learning experiences, things that promoted research and independent learning. And it's not unusual sometimes for students, but they want to improve the quality of the food service. And you'll see as we go along here that we're not waiting till the end to address some of these. We are actually, are able to address these as we go along and have so. I'm sure the board members and certainly some parents who may be listening are making some connections to some of the things that we're doing. Those are just two quotes down below, but... So the staff, upon entering the district, one of the attractions to this district was the caliber and hard work dedication of the staff. It is known for being exceptional teachers here. I've said this numerous times, and that, there's two things I've said numerous times to look at, quality of the teachers, the kids are the first and foremost, that's just a given, but the quality of the teachers and the curriculum that supports both. So again, the staff members also show that great pride, that they exhibit a high level of commitment to professional learning in their actual skilled area of pedagogy. And they support students through caring for each other, positive relationships and personalized learning environments. Teachers highlighted the need for more autonomy and decision-making, when it particularly arrived at professional development activities. So strengths that they cited were the actual student body themselves, which is a testament to our students. Again, the caliber and work ethic of the teachers. They valued the overall quality of education, that's why they are here. Exampleary student achievement, the collaboration amongst the staff that they have, the availability of resources. Certainly, people interested in that were talking about the budget type, but the availability of resources and support for education is one of the attractions of being here. High parent involvement, and then again, the variety of athletic and extracurricular activities. Opportunities were to continue to collaborate with parents to support students' social, emotional, academic learning needs. I would also say in their health needs. Create opportunities for staff autonomy and decision-making. Create, sorry, celebrate the good work of the staff. I think we should be telling our story more, and certainly that would be up to me and our staff to do that. But try to create opportunities to tell the story of the staff and the district and their good work. Provide more opportunities, I'll say, for the average student. But sort of, I don't even like using that terminology either, I actually probably should change that, but we just want to make sure that no students are missed in that process. Increase the opportunities to collaborate pre-K to 12th. The curriculum is tremendously solid, but with a lot of opportunities across different disciplines. Increase, they also talked about increasing their lab building and use of technology. So that's something that, again, is currently in the works. And to use a teacher evaluation plan and professional development to support teachers' learning and practices and make sure that students, that one of the ways we would do that is to get the professional development team up and running. Currently, it's not up and running, so that should get up and running, we would help that. This quote, as I think it was really sort of, is telling to me, and then sort of says it all, that the staff is raging with confidence. I will say that that was someone who came to observe our teachers as a consultant, so it's a wee bit disingenuous to say it's a teacher under that comment, but it's a recognition of the teacher's staff, the other one is the teacher's comment. So our parents and our community, we know we're fortunate enough to have a very talented and involved members of the community, both organizations and individual parents themselves, community members involved in decision-making. I commend the district for that. Sometimes you talk about parents getting formed in decision-making, and I really don't want them to be, our school district don't want them to be. They are involved here in decision-making in meaningful ways, but I think they're also keen to seek additional opportunities to partner with us and to support the schools and to support our student learning, so, and to continue to build the trust around the work that we're actually doing here. So there's a high level of engagement. They recognize the strong staff and the group administrators. They too understandably recognize academic achievement performance of students, the experience that we provide overall for our children, the opportunities that exist. So you can see that there's similar things that are coming out, the coordination of the pre-K to 12 curriculums. They felt, as we all do actually, that that is the cornerstone and bedrock of the actual curriculum or the actual experience. Opportunities to collaborate with administrators, and I feel it's an excellent return on investment, particularly for our taxpayers. Opportunities, again, to continue to expand social, emotional wellness program, both for students and also parent workshops and so on. Improve the elementary school facilities and move all the portals. A desire for lower class sizes. There was a number of parents who wanted to continue to look at alternate start times. And this is, the next one sort of dovetails with the students, to increase authentic learning experiences, that's more or less exactly what the student said. There was a number of people, maybe timing is everything when you give a survey, but there was a number of people who wanted to revisit transportation policies and practices. And you can never do enough of communication, but we understand that, I would say we do have to sort of improve and simplify our communications through different mechanisms, and certainly we make a commitment to doing that. But that, that was an opportunity that our parents felt was important here. We'll leave you with a little quote, which you can read. So, given some of those, now, if your thing wasn't mentioned, it doesn't mean that it's lost somewhere if someone's listening in, but there were connections that were made. Those were the priorities as reported back from our students, parents, and staff. Remember, again, if you may recall, they were asked to give the strengths, give the challenges, and then give the opportunities. So, and taking some of those and also comments that were made that were maybe not represented there otherwise, and sort of triangulating them, these are other emergent themes that I pulled out from the data. So vision, mission, goals, equity and diversity, teach and learning communication, culture and organization. So under vision, mission, and goals, we have talked about the district itself continues to use board goals, annual goals and objectives as a systemic improvement strategy primarily. And we've talked about, and we're already up and running about the idea of longer visionary documents through the mission, vision, mission, values, and goals, to create coherence around sort of bigger priorities, longer priorities, and also how we actually use our funds to align some of those. So that strategic plan, as we know, is up and running, and also to develop a vision of the graduate that actually supports and informs the strategic plan, but also creates a pathway for deeper learning for our students. So under equity and diversity, I think this is a good thing that the district work is guided by decision-making in the best interest of all students. That's always an answer from the Board of Education. We want to make sure that all students are challenged regardless of ability and backgrounds. We want to explore, and we should explore, and address any inconsistencies in performance among schools or populations of students. It's not uncommon sometimes for it to be different performance levels, and those should be addressed individually and personalized to the schools or to the groups of students. And we want to seek opportunities for kids to coursework curriculum program to prepare our kids for the diverse world, into life after our kids get out of Darian and the whole world out there, and we want to make sure that they are prepared through that. Explore how to use the resources to support differential needs of students who have different learning needs, exceptionalities, the English language learners, tiered services, and we have a number of students from diverse cultural backgrounds, and implement policies and practices that support equity and diversity. For teaching and learning, again, the cornerstone is really the great work that has been put in place here for some years around the actual curriculum itself. We want to make sure that the curriculum also provides the skills the kids need to compete in a global economy and global world. Increase the rigor of the curriculum for all students, and those are students, again, with learning differences, ALL students with required support, and students from diverse backgrounds. Want to integrate these technologies and learning and to distance learning opportunities. If there's anything that we've learned through this process, we need to sort of look at expanding those opportunities for students. I was actually surprised a little bit by the numbers of students who weren't taking online courses before this all happened, but there's an opportunity there to look at different digital learning opportunities. I think there's an opportunity to review all the... I think there's an opportunity to review all the esteemed programs, which includes arts, which typically goes into STEM there with the desire from a number of people to expand those programs for, in order for all kids to engage at the highest possible level. And we look at the elementary curriculum, the elementary curriculum is done in disciplines. It'd be a nice opportunity to look at if there are any interdisciplinary ways of looking at that curriculum and also integrating the social emotional learning. And again, we started a wee bit with the actual expertise of the staff, and this is kind of a weekend underdeveloped, but I do think we need to utilize their expertise and recognize their voice in promoting some innovation, action research, job and better professional development and inquiry when they're working together. If we can't do it here, I don't know where else you can do it. They have the skills to do it. So how do you provide that opportunity for their voice and to promote these attributes that we'd be looking for? Stakeholders have high expectations for performance transparency, allow them trust there and excellent communication. So we'll look for ways to actually continue to improve those and we'll also look for ways to utilize that technology to help with that communication. Culture and organization, the safety was the first thing we looked at. We're going to continue to look at safety enhancements and monitoring and monitoring improvements should be a normal process, particularly as it relates to social, emotional, physical, intellectual safety. Again, I want to sort of address the pressure for students to succeed. Again, this is sort of a conundrum. We're juxtaposed with the learning experiences encourage kids to persevere, perhaps even fail, have integrity and reality of learning, the reality of consequences at this level before they go into adulthood. That's a tough thing to say, but those challenges and failing and getting up, I say fail, it sounds, but learning experiences along the way. And that's, I know that's a hard, that's a hard thing to rationalize and I think it's also hard for, I'm a parent, I understand as hard as a parent to do that, but that is a reality that we're facing a little bit here to make sure our students are able to deal with issues of perseverance and significant challenges and get up again and move on. Again, evaluate and improve the reliability and access to technology, like we had our autonomy and decision making for the staff. I do think there's a lot of similarities that we do to different schools, but they have different people in the schools, they've got different leaders in the schools, they got different children in the schools. So there is an opportunity to differentiate some resources to the actual administrative schools, teachers. There is the big thing to probably improve in the facilities in the elementary schools. Update of district policy, that would include things like athletic policies and the implementation with fidelity of those policies. And continue to review the staff evaluation systems to make sure that they are actually promoting professional growth of all staff. And again, just an opportunity to tell the story and celebrate the good work of the staff and the students. So I'm thinking that you may be familiar with this text, "The smartest kids in the world," and I just took a little bit of a quote from it because this is a, I do think summed it up a little bit on the surface, the factors for teacher quality were local autonomy and trust and sort of organization at the state's level or at the country level here. But Amanda found that it was rigor that separated the smartest and certainly you have rigor here. Certainly other, other things come into play, but the rigor was the main thing and being able, you can see here, being able to deal with failure a little bit. So history shows that really there's a matter, so is luck, but politics are critical, but I'll just shift to, it also requires a feeling that spreads among people like a whispered oath kitchen table by kitchen table until enough of them agree that something must be done. So whatever we end up doing out of the strategic plan, I think it sort of sends two messages a little bit. One is can we exercise and implement whatever the plan is that we actually do have the will to do that and I think we would. But this is also to me a little bit of this pressure that the kids feel, that the kids feel, the parents who feel it too and trying to, it's hard to present a sense of balance. And if enough of us talk about it and rally around it, we'll be able to find that balance because there's an articulation that we need to find that balance. And with that, again, I'll thank people for their participation and certainly open to questions as we go along. Certainly the strategic plan is the thing that will provide the blueprint, but all of these things already relatively to some degree are either in the works or considering to put in the works or so tacitly I'll be working along on these topics as we move through, but I'm certainly like to hear what the board has to say here.
Great. If we click over to the other screen so I can call on board members.
Thank you. That's simple.
Okay. And then can we go to like a tile view?
Yep. Right there.
Okay. Click on that. Perfect. Okay. Board member questions or comments? Anybody? If I can't see you and you have a question, just say something because I can't, some of you aren't coming in. Any board members? Okay, I'll begin. I do have a question. You talk a couple of times in this presentation about rigor, teacher, student pressure, and I'm wondering, do you think this particular moment we're in can help redefine that paradigm? Because you know, we hear students saying they're pressured, we hear parents saying students are pressured, we hear teachers saying they're pressured, but then we also hear that it's valuable. Is there any lessons learned and maybe we don't know them yet until we're fully through this that has, that has helped us in reshaping that conversation in new learning environments or new modalities for learning?
Well, maybe not even that, but I see, certainly that actually, right? But that's a technical thing. When I look, I see the students sort of stepping up, right? We, as teachers, as staff and as students and as parents collectively together, we learn together. There was relatively no more complete experts in this, right? We made mistakes along the way together. We had to reflect and refine and move forward. So I think that there's lessons in there and students were able to persevere along the way. So I think those things that we're looking for in real life skills, we had a wee opportunity to dabble in this and to experience some of the adaptiveness of how flexible, how flexible we are to address an issue, make mistakes, revise, move on. So I think that this time period provides a nice wee window of opportunity to look at what that actually means.
Anybody else? Nobody?
You're not seeing Jill with you, are you?
Oh, I can't see Jill. So Jill, if you're talking, feel free to go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, this is Jill. Alan, thank you for this work, first of all. It's a tremendous amount of work and I really appreciate that you've looked at each constituency and captured what you've learned from them and gone on to talk about how you're going to apply that in your thinking moving forward. Tara touched on this a little bit and we talked about it in strategic planning. One would like to just put a period on this point in time and say, here we go forward. But of course, we have done a bit of a, taken a little bit of a left here. Can you talk about how we're going to capture some of the lessons learned and how we're going to, whether we'll need to rejigger any of the priorities that you've outlined from this period of time? With the understanding you may not be able to answer that right now, but how we might go about that decision making and what your vision is for the next little bit forward?
So I actually, I was actually thinking of whether I should actually include some of this into the entry plan, but essentially, essentially it wasn't sort of part of the entry plan per se. So we're going to have to take stock as soon as we, soon as we sort of close down, we'll be taking stock. We're part of a wee cohort of schools, school districts who are looking at how to, how to open up again and look at what learnings that we can take out of what has just transpired and how do we learn from that, modify that and prepare for the upcoming year. So it'll be a wee period of what you always have to do in terms of the learning processes, do a wee period of reflection. So primarily we'll do reflection as a, as a staff and see what the learning is and what the, what the professional learning is that we have to do in order to actually prepare for next year. But I do think it does give you wee windows and the opportunities that could exist, everything from opportunities, course opportunities for students to professional development days for teachers, whether it be snow days or otherwise, and that's how we would do that, but it certainly opens all those things up. So just to be honest, there'll probably just be a wee period of reflection as we close down here in terms of sort of gearing up again in terms of the needs of the actual district and what the professional learning needs are of the staff.
So can I follow up just on a practical question? Would you think combined some of what Jill and I are just saying? So we have your entry plan, the Strategic Planning Committee will meet and maybe you could speak to how many more times they are meeting and then what work for the board as we start to plan our work because yes, I think we're trying to see what the fall looks, but I think, and board members feel free to jump in here, I think in general we'd like to keep the momentum going and have a strategic plan and a vision for the district. You know, we'd like to keep that work going. So what's kind of the practical timeline that you're on now, given this new environment?
So we modified, we modified the timeline and I think our next meeting is June 2nd, if I have that date correctly, but it sounds about right to me. Some people on the committee even know that, but I think that's the date. And we're hoping that we'll be able to continue some of the work through the summer. And actually, we're still trying to get on track of actually having a guiding document for the start of the fall.
Okay. So in terms of the board's work, the Strategic Planning Committee, Planning Committee plans to meet through the summer or are we, are there deliverables to the board that they should be anticipating for work this summer?
I would think that the board should expect whether we have the retreat or whatever other forum they're in for the group to come back because I think that that group can't embrace or adapt any plan without the board being informed and informing it and accepting it if that's the case.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so there will be, there will be a back and forth process still.
Okay, great. Any other board questions? And I'm sorry, for whatever reason tonight, I can't see you all, so if I'm not calling on you, feel free to call out.
One quick one. And this may not be something for tonight, but just the issue of the vision, the graduate as that develops, I'd certainly like to hear more about that and what the framework is as well. So again, not for tonight, but that was one that jumped out at me during this presentation. So we'd love to learn a little bit more when we can.
Sure.
Tara, can you see me? It's Katie.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, Dr. Adley, was there anything that surprised you in, in your entry plan and talking to constituents or anything that you thought someone would mention or a group would mention that they didn't? What surprised you?
Well, there, there were a lot of connections that were made and some of them are mentioned here, some of them are not mentioned here. The idea of continuing to, well, through this year became a diversity, there's a diversity aspect to that, that's maybe not, it's maybe subtle, but there's a diversity aspect here that I think is extremely important and I probably wouldn't have necessarily predicted that going into the process, but I think that is one. I think the students' recognition of some of the activities that they're already engaged in and they continue to be, want to be engaged in in terms of global readiness and opportunities to experience some of those things and some of those learning environments and learning activities that they're already engaged in that they would like to see more of. But I think the main one for me was really the emergence of, fairly homogeneous sort of setting the idea of raising the issue of diversity. I actually think it's a good thing.
So is it fair to say too, you see some equity themes as I look at what you're discussing tonight as well?
Yes. So I think, I think the equity themes primarily are access, but also to ensure that the performance of students in those various categories are performing as well as everyone else is. So yes.
Anybody else? And again, for whatever reason tonight, I can't see you all, so feel free to jump in. Okay. So then we will look forward to hearing more from both you and the findings of the Strategic Planning Committee. And that will develop, because I will be getting out to the board soon, I hope, kind of a summer calendar for the type of work we need to do and kind of pulling everyone's schedule so we can plan accordingly. With that, we'll move on. So thank you, Dr. Adley. Thank you for all that work and your entry plan has been throwing a few curveballs, to say the least. We will move on to the update on enrollment for the 2021 school year. Mr. Roodel.
Sure. So we have the enrollment through May. May is relatively flat to April at 290 kindergarten students. We do want to point out Royal in April did have a number of ELP students who were all coded to Royal and that has been fixed for May. Currently we are four sections under budget, though kindergarten tends to tick up as the summer progresses. Looking at first grade, we are up one section at Hinley. In second grade, we are pretty close to projection, actually one over projection, but no change in sections. Third grade, we are plus one section at Tokenique, essentially two students across all five schools. Fourth grade is no change in sections. Fifth grade, we are down one section at Hinley. So grades one through five, it's a net section increase of one. So K5 right now is three sections under budget, but again, the majority is kindergarten. Middlesex is relatively flat to projection, two students under, and the high school is 10 students over at 1405. So currently through May, we have 4,595 students against the projected enrollment of 4,622.
Great. Any board questions? Seeing and hearing none.
I had a quick question, sorry. This is Mike. Rich, I know that there's a lot of anecdotal information out there about potential increases in population amid this COVID and potential flight from urban areas. Have you heard about any of this from any of your colleagues or do you have a plan to try and track that? I understand you can only deal with the numbers as they come up, but have you heard anything along those lines?
A lot of communities are talking about like the flight from the city, especially in lower Fairfield County. As of right now, we just haven't seen it in the enrollment numbers, though that could change as the summer progresses.
Thank you.
Great. Any other board questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Roodel.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mrs. Ritchie.
I was waving. So I just wanted to follow up on that a little bit, Rich, because with the new directive that we got from the state in terms of social distancing and classrooms, do we have any sense of what that could potentially do to our sections? I know right now we're down, but have you had the chance to even evaluate what that could potentially do to class sizes and sections?
We haven't quite got into that. It would also be a space issue within the buildings, obviously, if we have to have significant reductions in class size and that would have to be a factor as well.
Any other board questions? Okay. We will move on to discussion on the April 2019, 2020 financial report and possible action on the proposed budget transfers. Mr. Roodel.
I'll just share my screen real quick.
Again, much of this has gone over detail in the Budget Committee meeting, but we will, Mr. Roodel, as you, as you will.
Can you see the screen?
Yep.
We can, yes.
All right. So this is the financial report through April. We are currently showing a year end positive forecast of $923,097 or 0.93% of the budget. The general education RCs forecast a surplus of $930,984 with the special education RCs at a slight deficit of $7,887. The first category is salaries. We are forecasting a positive variance of $775,253. It is made up of salary savings of just over $250,000, savings and substitutes due to the closure of $141,000. Budget control again remains un. Budget control, again, remains untouched at $263,000. We are again carrying over savings for student interns of $10,200, savings in athletics of $58,000, and then homebound tutoring of just shy of $50,000. In the operating section, we are forecasting a total savings of $618,584. We have various operating account savings of $344,000. This is things like teaching supplies, consumables, textbooks, and again, facility services. We are showing accumulative savings of $68,000. That is primarily savings from the custodial cleaning contract and the trash removal contract, sports officials, so savings of $48,424. This is due to the lack of a spring season due to the closure. Transportation, a little over $140,000. Software does show a deficit of $20,371, and that is one of the transfers during this month, and that was for the Zoom-enhanced software for the closure. Tuition, public, non-public schools is a savings right now of $37,025. Moving to fixed, we do have a forecast positive balance of $380,425, a small positive variance in regular transportation of just over $24,000, insurance of $227,295, a small deficit of $11,941 in payroll taxes, and then utilities, which includes heating, oil, natural gas, electricity, water, and sewer, favorable balance of $141,300. Various equipment line items, a positive balance of $5802. Revenue is the biggest shortfall at $856,968. We did receive our final excess cost reimbursement. We are $284,820 below budget. The entitlement cap was reduced to 70.89%, and so that was the reimbursement rate the district received. We are forecasting field and building rentals to be short, just over $100,000, again, due to the school closure. We are forecasting summer school revenue to be a shortfall of $428,132. We are recommending having a change in how we account for summer school revenue. Typically, the district has applied whatever revenue it collected in the year to the balance. We are recommending recognizing the revenue for the program at hand, so if we are collecting deposits, for example, right now for the summer program coming up in July, that would be referenced in the fiscal '21 budget. ELP tuition, again, is down $46,673. We did have less paying students this year than previous years. And then Medicaid reimbursement is a positive $5,309. So as I mentioned, there are two transfers, which the superintendent did approve, the first for $22,500, which was for the Zoom-enhanced software for e-learning, and then $15,675 for contracted physical therapy within special education.
Board questions? Mrs. Ritchie.
So we did talk a lot about excess costs in the meeting, the finance meeting, but what I wanted to touch upon was something that I didn't bring up, which is the fact that we may get adjusted further downward, and that there might be an ECS impact to the town. So I just wanted to make sure people caught that in their memo, and I don't know if Rich wants to elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure. In terms of the ECS adjustment, every year the district gets audited, as our excess cost submissions do, and so every year when they do the audit, there's usually a small excess cost adjustment. So the state pays based on the March 1 filing, and you make projections based on what expenditures you'll have from March 1 to June 30. Typically, it's small variances where maybe a student left the district, or new student came in, or certain days were missed, so the variance is usually pretty small, and the state will attach that adjustment, either positive or negative, to the town's ECS payment. Given that we've been closed for a number of months, there could be a large difference between what we actually projected to spend versus what we actually end up spending for this fiscal year, and so that adjustment would be attached to the ECS payment that goes to the town.
So I think, and the board members may remember, this is one of the reasons that in the past we've been conservative about budgeting this number, and there was some discussion last year about raising the reimbursement rate, because there is a true-up to the town that happens later in the year with this. So Rich, did I hear you right, it's 70.8% at this point, correct?
70.89. Originally, in February, they had thought it would be 74.8. The state did drop that to 70.89.
Okay, so as we predicted and as we kind of reported out to the town bodies, we did in fact experience a significant drop in excess cost.
Correct.
Any other board questions on the financial report? Right now, I can only say Deb Burke and, oh, go ahead, Mrs. McCammon.
Rich, just for the purposes of clarification for everybody, can you talk about what kinds of expenses are going down right now specifically that would affect ECR? Are you talking about transportation or tuition? What's driving that number?
Some of it can be out-of-district transportation. That is at a reduced rate of 81%. Homebound tutoring could play a part, consulting services and contracted services. So any expense that could be attached to a student who is excess cost eligible might end up being less than we had originally anticipated.
But Rich, in addition to Mrs. McCammon, and Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, you're talking about what in this particular scenario might be doing it. I think this goes to Mr. Maroney's point, that he's had a number of years, and we've had that conversation, we were noticing a cohort of students that would no longer be eligible for excess cost within the district, and we are realizing some of that now as well, in addition to some very specific situations related to our current situation. Is that correct?
So our current situation would be the attachment to the ECS payment, which would happen next year. The cohort, we are seeing certain declines in terms of the cost of certain students, and then certain students who have either come back to district or left district, students who have aged out as well. It's certainly not a static number, it's a dynamic population where costs either can fluctuate up or down depending on the needs.
Great. Any other questions?
Yep, just a follow-up. Thank you. This might be a question for Richard, or it might be for Shirley. Specifically on the contracted services, my understanding was that we were filling those needs as much as we can. What's happening with contracted services that we might see a decline? Is it just we're not able to have, for example, a specific type of speech pathologist serve in the way that they might have before, and so they're billing it less hours?
I'll take that, Rich.
Sure.
I don't think, there hasn't been a change based on student, that's the question. We're still using our contract service providers because they do have specialized services doing that. There hasn't been a fluctuation in that, because the students that, even during this pandemic time, our kids are still working with our contracted providers virtually, so the decline hasn't been, it'll only be based on IPs if we change services or regulations to relieve some of that. We have participated in training our own SLPs in prompt therapy, we continue to do that as well. So we are trying to offset some of the need for contracted services, but we're still maintaining what we currently have.
Rich, can I ask, the $37,000 drop in public and non-public tuition, is that just based on budgeted projection, or is that specific to something?
It was placement changes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you to the work of the Finance Committee in going through all this. Do you want to move on? You're good with the transfers now? As reported? Deb, you're good with transfers too, if I make a motion?
Well, we don't have to, because I think Dr. Adley already approved the transfers, but if the board wants to go ahead and vote on it, I guess it's really after the fact. Is that correct, Rich? Those transfers were already approved by Dr. Adley.
Yeah, they were already approved by Dr. Adley.
Okay, so the board is just going to acknowledge that they're all fully aware, and there's no disapproval of those transfers at this point. Is there anyone who has any concern over those? Okay, great. Then we will move forward to further discussion and revision on fiscal year 2021 budget to meet the reduction approved by the Board of Finance. Dr. Adley and Mr. Roodel.
Okay, so just to explain kind of where we are, the board did receive a packet of information that delineates how we might realize a saving of just over $1 million to reconcile. We have actually shown here a saving of 1.2, and just to give a little bit of flexibility and discussion area, certainly the board can go in a different direction also. Before the meeting, I also sent a sort of, what we ended up doing for the actual savings was to package them with sort of categories, contracts renegotiated, pre-purchasing adjustments and deferrals, staff and revenue adjustments. So that was the way we sent it out. And then we subsequently sent out, if we just took those out and just ranked them so that people can understand them fairly clearly in terms of a level of priority. So I did send that out earlier, and that will be posted for the public also after the meeting. So there's the original memorandum that these items that we suggested are uncontained in those categories, and then we pulled them out separately, if it was easier to look at them that way. So I think you probably have seen in here that some of the processes we went through in terms of, we relooked at the operating budget. Actually, I'm probably just saying, just in general, the way it works is, as a minister team here in central services, we look at it, we then involve our administrators, school administrators, and even some of the ALP administrators, department heads. So we came up with, tried to look at things that were new, that we could do, and since the budget was actually developed, some of the contracts that were changed, some of the savings, modifications that from Richard's office that we could actually build in. So those are the ones that we actually built in. In this case, we're also suggesting that we pre-purchased some of it, and if there are orders, 300,000, just over 300,000 that we have pre-purchased, or that we would suggest to pre-purchase as an administrative recommendation. If we don't do that, you'll see that there's other program staff on the list that is the recommendation, that those are what we would try to address if we did not, or the board did not want to actually move forward with a pre-purchase amount of anything. We did a central services reorganization, primarily in the business department a little bit, and that entails a suggestion of taking operating savings of about $68,000, and moving that into the food service fund. That will allow a little bit of a reorganization, and will offset the budget a little bit, so we came back and used this as an opportunity. All right? If there's another way of looking at something else, and so we looked at an alternative way to make some adjustments down in the business office, that I think Mr. Roodel would say would work well for him. You also have Schedule D, which is the middle school libraries, just because that was a change that we suggested making, and then we tried to avoid impacts on staff and program reductions as the last opportunity. So that's the way the memorandum of $1 million is structured, it shows 1.2. Since Darian's summer school, we weren't going to rent the fields out, but we will be renting out to the organizations that can comply, so that offset the reduction now that we were going to have.
Or we hope to. We don't want to get ahead of the first selectman in her executive order, we hope to.
And so that will be reduced to about 167. We're happy to go through, if the board would like us to go through in detail some of those lineups, we certainly can do that, but that sort of frames kind of, we had the savings that we've identified through the minister's team and a group of administrators. We came back and suggested, if the board had more talent, then that's, that would be a good thing too, but we suggested, given the average that we had returned over the last couple of years, that that seemed to be a reasonable amount, at least to start with and to put on the table. And then we looked at programs and staff.
Okay, so I think this is a wide-ranging conversation, but an important one for us to get our hands on as we move forward and we have conversations with the RTM. So first, to the public clarifying, because I've gotten a lot of kind of anecdotal questions about this, the capital, the changes and cuts to the budget of $523,750, people have asked why we're not discussing those. Those, at this point, were cut from the budget, and they're out of, they're kind of out of our control. What we're left dealing with is the $1 million of operating. So I've definitely had people asking, why are you only talking about operating? Because that's really what's in our control at this point. Capital and capital needs will need to be revisited next year and out in the future as we go forward. So if you hear us talking about operating, that's why we're, that's where we are. I think first, and I am open to suggestions on this, but first, I think we have to tackle the notion of the pre-purchasing with the educational funds we have. I think that would then inform what and where we are looking for in the next conversation. Certainly, I think we need to run down the superintendents and the administrations' recommendations, and then I'm happy to open it up if there's anyone who has a question about where we need to look, or if they feel we haven't looked somewhere, and let the administration answer kind of the thoughts and reasonings for that. I think I see Mr. Dineen, is that Duke, is that you?
Not at this time, Terr, thanks.
Sorry, I thought, sorry.
Katie and Mike.
Katie, Mrs. Stein.
So wait, are you wanting us to give our hands on it, or?
I think we need to section off the conversation, I think we'll end up down a rabbit hole, which leaves us nowhere. Let's start first with the administration's recommendation for pre-buying items into the next year.
Okay.
Mrs. Stein.
Okay, I guess I would ask the overarching question of, why are we limiting it? Why wouldn't we pre-purchase your entire list? Sort of coming at an arbitrary floor, it doesn't make sense to me in this time when we're in a pandemic, and if pre-purchasing these items can prevent us from impacting programs like strings and sports and other important programs in our district, why are we just stopping at doing three or four items out of the long list you came up with?
In all honesty, Katie, I don't want to be completely inflammatory, I'm going to try and see where the board is on that concept. I would spend more.
I'm fully supportive, I think if we're going to do it, then let's do it. I mean, I think the board conversation, but to me, if it prevents touching programs and you have a way to do it that makes sense, and it seems like there are certain savings we capture by pre-purchasing, to me, I'm fully supportive.
But I just didn't want to come in tonight, but just one proposal of.
Okay. And then I heard Mr. Burke's hand was up too, I can't see you, Mike.
Yes, yes. Yeah, just on the concept of the pre-purchasing, I think that's a fair endeavor. I will say, did not look beyond the list that the superintendent proposed right at the moment, but I am fine with the concept and fine with the proposed changes.
Mrs. Ritchie, do you have thoughts? Maybe best if I just call on everybody.
Okay, sure. I support the pre-buying strategy. I guess my only concern about pre-buying all the items, the 878,000 here on the list, is that I'm just concerned about what next year is going to look like, and if in August or July we are faced with extraordinary expenses for the reopening of school, I would like to be able to maybe tap into some of that surplus at that point, so maybe then pre-buy some more of these items if we're looking at substantial expenses. So I support the pre-buying, but I'm not sure I would be on board with doing the full 878,000 at this point.
To be clear, come, and Mr. Roodel, keep me honest on this one, once the year ends out, those funds are frozen, so we are allowed to make expenditures for any educational need that we see fit in terms of supplies and things like that, but once the year closes, we couldn't expend in August, we would go back through an appropriation process to expend at that point.
Correct.
I'm not saying that I'm taking a position on what we do yet, that's just the process. And Mr. Seeny, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I would like to maybe change the process.
Yeah, I would like to maybe change the process of this. And this probably should be the last thing that we're talking about, since these are taxpayer funds and we're talking about accelerating spending basically for things that were originally put in the budget for last year. I think as a part of process, we've tasked the administration to list out its priorities. But we, as a board, haven't gone back and looked at any of the other areas which may or may not present or be attractive for a majority of us to meet this 1.025 million operating cut. So I'm against, for the most part, pre-buying and pre-spending. You know, we've been affected by COVID. We will be affected by COVID going into next year. To Mr. Ritchie's point, even though you can't carry things over, we'll go back to the general fund, which we can request access to those funds should we need them from the Board of Finance and the R T M. I feel like we're skirting our financial responsibility by returning mostly its funds. And I would actually suggest we start differently and start calling the list and looking for the list that the administration brought forth and then also look at areas that we haven't unturned since February. You know, things like legal, turnover, budget control, substitutes, some more professional development. I know there were 20,000 to bring professional development, library supplies, you know, things like that that weren't brought up by administration. I'd like to hear why they weren't. But, you know, we started this process, I think, upside down a bit. The, you know, if we were left, I guess the last statement is if we were left with nothing else but to pre-purchase on some items that the board felt were appropriate, then I would support it. But I don't want to do it right off the bat.
Okay, Mrs. McCammon.
So the way I view this process is that the goals in reducing the budget coming out of the Board of Finance were to reduce taxes and to maximize the reserve to plan for the unplanned, which I understood Deb and John to refer to as well. Beyond that, I think then our third sort of charge is to optimize what we do and decide what our goals are. And I think that, you know, I think that there's a lot we don't know. And I'd like to be sure that we have maximum flexibility for what we don't know. For what we do know, I want to make sure that we're spending on what I would argue are three priorities. Making sure that our students and our teachers acclimate after time away and for any changes, which there likely to be a lot. Two, social emotional support. And three, remediation, which means, which would have components at the curricular level, you know, systemic, system-wide, but would also have implications for our students as individuals. It means time to actually take a look at where they are. Shirley talked about that vis-à-vis special ed. I think it will be too true for our general ed students. So personally, I agree with talking about sort of what we want to accomplish, where those dollars need to sit, and then figuring out whether or not, what we do from a mechanical perspective.
So do you have a position on the idea of pre-buying?
I think it's too early to take a position. I agree with reducing taxes. I agree with maximizing revenue. And I think we need to talk about optimizing what we do and discuss what our goals are. And until those things happen, you know, until we're all on the same page, I think taking a position about a specific mechanism is is just too early.
Okay, Mr. Maroni.
For me, I applaud the creativity of pre-buying. However, I think, I think we end up skirting the, our legal, I don't know, our legal, our, it's our, you know, we proposed the non-lapsing account to the Board of Finance. They turned that down. And to me, this feels like we're just coming up with an alternative to a non-lapsing account in pre-buying. So I think, to Mrs. McCammon's point, I think we need to have a, and Mr. Seeny as well, is look at, look at the overall budget and have a better view of where, where the proposed cuts are. And then maybe we come back with alternatives and give a little more direction or a little more clarity to the superintendent than the administration as to where to go. And in that, it could be pre-buying as well. But right now, I just feel like we're, we're, we were told not to do it and we're finding a creative way to do it, which again, I think is ingenious, but I don't think it's the right, it feels wrong to me.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Hi, Tara. I would first like to echo Mr. Seeny, Ms. McCammon, and Dennis Maroni. I agree fully. I don't think this is really in the spirit of the exercise we're looking to do with the Board of Finance. And I'm not sure the fidelity is there to the effort that's underway to the taxpayers by going through the pre-buying. So I would reject this approach at this time.
Okay, and Mr. Dineen.
I think all, all good conversation as always. I think there might be an opportunity for pre-buying, but I think we're a little ahead of the curve before doing the rest of the work to some of the points that were made. And then if we all agreed for the reasons that there was an opportunity to use some of those funds to do some things, I'd be open to that conversation. I go back to how we left the Board of Finance meeting and to even go further than that, I think just to put a stake in the sand again and say how much hard work that the administration did to come up with the original budget. And I thought about that. I thought about the fact that we're talking about efficiencies and we're talking about how do we get more out of the budget? And I felt that we have to give the administration a lot of credit. It was two new sets of eyes with Dr. Adley and Rich looking at it. And they did come up with efficiencies and changes. So they worked hard to get the budget of where it was. Now we're charged with coming up with, you know, more efficiencies. But I also go back to leaving the Board of Finance with a $557,000 ask to come up with. And that's, you know, what I wanted to look at and talk about is what does that 557 look like and how have you prioritized what that looks like? And look, there's a lot of good information here. As always, you guys have done a lot of work. But we seem to have jumbled everything together again, in my view. And I wanted to look specifically at the additional 557 and what that looked like and how you prioritize that.
Okay, well, since I called on all of you, it's only fair that I share my opinion. I think if I go back to what the stated goal of all of this was, both cuts to the town and cuts on the Board of Education side, it was to lessen the burden to taxpayers. I think we have an appropriation. We have been unable to expend our appropriation due to COVID. I also think that, and to Mr. Maroni's point, it is not, it is perfectly legal to do this. And it is, I don't really think it's skirting. I think we did propose the non-lapsing account, which was very specific. And the board with their authority said no to that. But we have taxed taxpayers to spend money on education. We have the ability to spend money to meet those educational goals. And that doesn't put any added burden on taxpayers. So to me, we actually are meeting both the educational needs of children in the district and the stated goal of not overburdening taxpayers. As to the health of the general fund, I think we have heard several times, it's very healthy. I certainly think that if we don't have a reasonable, good expenditure, that we should return all of the money. But I certainly would be interested in hearing about and discussing any reasonable expenditure that both saves the taxpayer any stress or burden, which was the cause, and helps educate our children. So that's, that's kind of where I stand. I think that if what we're now interested in doing is running through administrative and then any board suggestions of changes, we can do that. Mr. Seeny seemed to want to kind of run through some board questions to best understand why the superintendent came up with his list. I don't know, Alan, do you think it's, are you, you prefer to run through your list or hear board member questions?
Tara, just, I think Mike has a question or?
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
So that's okay. Sort of getting to Mr. Seeny's point about being on the same page. So I heard Mr. Seeny talk about the figure being $1,251,56. On the document, we have $1,192,321. So just, so I understand, we all agree that we're, we're cutting to the 1192321 or the 1025156?
So our, so our charge is the, from our list here, 1025. Richard, that is correct, right?
Yep, the difference is whether or not the board wants to cover the projected deficit.
Which I think, just to follow my point, I think that's something we ought to think about coming to a consensus on, because it'll impact what the necessity is. I hear some members talking about not doing, not doing pre-purchasing unless the situation seemed more drastic. And I think we need to understand what the numbers we're getting to, so we can figure out how drastic things are.
Dr. Adley.
Well, I can, we can, we can do it either way. Just from Mr. Dineen's point, so the document that the board received just prior to the meeting and the community will receive also, what it does, it takes, it takes the findings that we had prior to going to the Board of Finance. So it lists all those again, and those should be fairly familiar to you, because there's parking fees and all the things that we had spoken to before. Then we prioritize on top of that the lists if you want to continue to cumulatively try to get to the total. So perhaps that's the most easiest document to follow. The documentation that you receive in the packet puts those in different, other different buckets. And also gives some descriptions of what the actual impact of those programs are.
So I think the way I'd like to do it is hear the administration's reasons for why things are on the list and then open it up to the board if there are other areas that they'd like to hear, you know, why not, some of the things Mr. Seeny listed. Because I think, one, I'd like to understand the administration's thought process and then open it up to board questions. Mrs. Ritchie.
Just to clarify procedurally, I think from my perspective, there, the list that we got from Dr. Adley, there are things on it that I support, but there are things on it that I would argue against cutting. So at some point, I would like to go through each item. And I know it sounds cumbersome, but I would like to go through each item one by one. Because there are quite a few on here that I do not support, that I don't want to see taken out, so.
I think that's exactly, I think that's exactly what you, we have to treat it like our cut list on Cut Night and understand it. And then if anyone has something that they would like to say, quote, add to Cut List, they should hear from the administration why or why not. And then the board can consider for our next meeting. But I think first, we need to treat it like our. And run through the administration's recommendation.
Yeah, I just, like Deb, I just left the thing on that even from a couple of meetings ago, it was certainly clear that there wasn't uniform consensus of all the items that were on the original list even. So we'll run through them. Rich, you just want to go through them one time and then we'll, if there's questions, I'll be happy to take them as well, so just.
So is it fair that we all understand the cuts that were on the original document? We may not agree or we may choose to disagree with them. But do you still want to run through things like the refuse collection, technology, equipment? I think we've discussed those at this point. Mrs. Ritchie.
Well, again, the, some of the things that were proposed on the original list for the Board of Finance, I don't support them. So I think as a board, those are things that administration has proposed, but as a board, we have not applied on that. So every item needs to be discussed. Every item needs to be voted on. We're going to have to vote on each of these items down the road, whenever that is after the R T M vote, and vote on each of these items. That's how I perceive the process.
No, that's fine. We'll take it like a cut list and we'll have a question after each one. If there's no questions, we'll move forward.
Can I just mention, just because, and as Richie just mentioned, that they're after the R T M, which is fine. But this is not, I mean, just, I'm not, certainly I'm not expecting the board to come with a consensus on it. I'm not expecting that at all. But I'm also just concerned about eventually, hopefully we're going to go to at the end of June, because this is not a year to defer purchases of things that we need anyway. Anyway, I believe it's.
So we'll have to make some decision and have a priority list. One, for transparency for the R T M, that this is our list in this, you know, in priority order, so they understand should they choose to make any modifications to the budget. And then I also think we'll need to come to a consensus on this idea of pre-buying. So if the board decides that's something it would like to engage in, then the, the district has time to do that. So Mr. Roodel, why don't you start? And maybe it's easier if we go down that ranking list.
I'll just, I'll bring up the document. Everybody can see it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the first line item is refuse collection. That is for a reduction of $29,242. Again, we did issue an R F P for trash removal and the low bid did come in $29,000 under budget. The second item is for $28,125. This is a new item that was not on the deferral list. We are.
Rich, I'm just going to stop you, so we have a procedure. After each one, I'll ask for questions and comments in case there's any questions or comments. So I'm assuming refuse collection straightforward. Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll go on to technology equipment.
Sure. We, this is a new item. It was not on the deferral list. We have issued an R F P for the Chromebooks. Issuing an R F P doesn't require us to actually award anything should we choose not to purchase the Chromebooks. But the price point is coming in $25 per unit under. So based on that, assuming the Chromebooks stay, the reduction would be $28,125.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is.
Dennis.
So, oh, if I'm looking correctly at the pre-purchases, it's only iPads. Why wouldn't we pre-purchase the Chromebooks if we're going down that road?
You could.
We could.
Just a question. Again, I don't agree with the pre-purchase, but that would be 577,000.
Well, I appreciate you considering it, Mr. Maroni.
Okay, moving on to in-district transportation.
So the next three line items actually really go together. But it is the renegotiated contract with First Student. So the share of savings for special education in district transportation is $34,701.
Hearing or seeing none, we'll move forward.
Tara, I'm sorry, I was waving.
Mrs. Ritchie, I'm sorry, guys. I can't see you all, so feel free if I say that just to jump in.
So it's, it's not a question, it's just a comment. And I just want to applaud Rich and the tremendous work that he did with this contract during this time renegotiating it and getting a fantastic deal for us. And it looks like we now can pay for that additional bus. So thank you for that hard work.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to fuel, oil, regular pupil transportation. Mr. Roodel.
Yep, so I did reach out. This is a new item that was not on the deferral list. I did reach out to our vendor who supplies heating oil and then also diesel fuel. Given the change in the economy, one of the things that has changed significantly is energy costs. So we were able to renegotiate a new price point for both heating oil and diesel fuel below $2 at $1.79. So for heating oil, it would be a savings of $30,200 and then for diesel fuel, $8,200.
Hey, Rich? Quick question. Are we locked in now at this point? How long are we locked into? And do you get another crack at it? Can you, can you bottom tick this for us?
So we would be locked in for next school year.
Next school year. Okay, thank you.
Quick question, Tara, John. Rich, do you, what about natural gas, since we're switching some schools over to natural gas?
So as of right now, we haven't been able to get any change in price points for natural gas.
Any other questions? Great, we'll move on to student accident insurance.
So this is another new item that was not on the deferral list. The district does carry student accident insurance and obviously, since the closure happened, we haven't had to use student accident insurance. So we are. student accident insurance. So we are going to get a renewal credit. Floor is $12,073. We are looking to see if they could push that credit upwards, but at least is the floor $12,073.
Any questions? Seeing none, we will move on to telephone.
So this was an item on the deferral list. Jeff's department did do a telephone audit and it is a savings of $7,800.
Any questions?
We're making, needed for the wifi.
We'll move on to software maintenance.
So again, this is an item that was on the deferral memo. The web filter that we purchased is provided by the state of Connecticut. So that's a reduction in software of $40,000.
Any questions? Great. Elementary allocation of resources.
Sure. In working with the five elementary principals and kind of trying to do a bottoms-up approach to the formula, we are recommending a reduction of $23,545 across all five schools.
Any questions?
Yes, Tara?
Yeah, Mrs. Ritchie.
Rich, can you just clarify, is this something that is going to be savings that will continue going forward? Or is this a, in other words, is this a one-time quote unquote deferral? Are we going to see expenses come back?
So our expectation is this could be a savings we'd see in the future as well. It would be the first year of an adjustment of the formula. So we would obviously watch it as it progresses. But based on the feedback from the principals, we would expect it to stay this way.
When we, when we actually did this, presented this in the budget development, we tried to model it and we stood by the number. And so I'll just be saying that this is, this is actually testing the theory. So we don't know ultimately.
And you will come back to us at some point with what that new adjusted formula then represents? Right now, we have a dollar figure, but where the change in the formula is occurring?
We have that change in the.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, we have that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, in-district special education transportation?
Given the recommendation to have ESY be virtual, we would not need the buses for ESY. However, this would be something that would have to reappear in the fiscal '22 budget. So we would see upward pressure in this line item in the fiscal '22 budget as we restore that.
Questions? Okay, moving forward.
Sorry, this is Dennis. I have a question on that. So would, would this reduction of, of 700, no, it's only 115,000, never mind. So 115,000, that, that probably would not, would this impact our excess cost grant and things like?
Yeah, yes, it likely would. We would estimate that it would be roughly $30,000 of lost revenue in excess cost by not having transportation costs as billable expenses.
Okay.
Other questions?
Do we need to, this is Jill. Rich, do we need to make that adjustment in the, in the calculation?
So there's a couple of things to consider with excess cost. One, obviously, if we're not going to have transportation, that would be downward pressure in the amount that we would expect. We were also rather aggressive with the reimbursement rate at 75%. The one unknown that we don't have is if there is compensatory education costs and those costs are associated with students who are excess cost eligible or just not quite meeting excess cost, but this would push them over the edge, that could potentially increase what we could be reimbursed for. So for those three factors, we didn't choose to make an adjustment to excess cost.
Thank you.
Okay, textbooks.
So this was on the deferral memo previously. This would change the subscription for the middle school math books from a six-year subscription to a three-year subscription.
And am I correct that in this one, there's savings in the immediate, but over the long run, we're paying more?
Correct.
Okay, Mrs. Ritchie.
So I am opposed to this particular cut and mostly because I brought it up during budget deliberations and I was sold by Susie on the fact that we should not cut this number. So at this point in time, my sentiment on this has not changed and I don't think it's a wise cut. And that's, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew. That's where I stand on that.
I will say, I echo Mrs. Ritchie's feelings on this. I think that it meets a short-term goal, but in the long run, taxpayers are paying more. So I'm not really sure it meets the overall goal. So I have concerns about this, this modification.
Quick question for Rich.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we want the, the present value changes, the deferral for three years, how big a difference that makes? Ever do that math?
We could provide that. I believe it was around about $50,000 more, but we could certainly provide that in writing.
Thank you.
Mr. Maroney, I thought I saw your hand.
I had the same question as Mr. Brown.
Okay. Um, any other questions on this item? Okay, professional development?
So this was an item that was on the deferral memo. This would just hold professional development flat year over year.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
On the professional development, is this ongoing cyclical development or is this something that would change in reaction to, you know, changes in education or play things that we have to do to react to COVID? And then follow up to that would be, is this contractually mandated or is this something we could cut further if there was a desire to do that? Thank you.
So we have, hope, Chris, you want to start there?
I can start with this one if you'd like. I would say it's a little bit of both. So I've reached out to some of our service providers that we've worked with in the past to see if school does not return business as usual next year. First of all, are they still providing offerings? And the answer from everyone is yes. So the actual impact of, of holding flat might not be too significant because we are not paying for things like travel, or not only for outside providers, but also for things like our teachers going into New York for Teachers College because everything's going to be virtual. That's the plan. Whether or not school returns business as usual with many of those outside agencies. And there are some pieces that are new. And I did ask the department chairs to go back and take a look to see what is essential and what is non-essential. And so I think with, if we held flat, we could provide everything that we, we would like to.
Chris, do you think that we will see needs for different types of professional development? Either increased development for online learning or just other types of development that we might still need funds for that when we created this budget weren't even on our minds?
Yeah, so there's, we're, as we're working with curriculum development and professional development, we're simultaneously creating scenarios and different plans as we move forward. So one of the things that we're thinking is we're going to need significant continued support with technology and professional development. So we have some plans for some, a summer institute that would be in-house with a lot of our internal people that could take the lead on that. But that would be just reallocating and making some shifts into what we thought we were going to do.
Thank you. I'm sorry, someone else. Dave, were you had a follow-up to your question?
No, I guess all of the contractual aspect is really, are we obligated to provide a certain dollar number to the teachers as part of their contract with the schools? Or is this something we control completely?
There, there is a provision in there for the, for professional development. I said, $5,500? Richard, it's supposed to be $50,000 or something, render?
That's tuition reimbursement, which is a separate one.
Tara, quick question?
Yeah, Mike, Mr. Burke, and then Mrs. Ritchie, and then Mr. Seeny.
On professional development, just an overall thought, kind of goes back to one of Jill's points earlier. As we think about what schools are going to be, I understand that this number, we may have savings because we won't be transporting to people, but we may well have to be doing massive curriculum support and help for these teachers that have gone through, you know, months of rewriting the playbook and they may need some additional help as time goes on. So I mean, I'm absolutely guided by what Rich is saying, but this may well be something where we're going to have to go back and have this be a major COVID-related expense to ask for additional funds for.
Great. Mrs. Ritchie. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Adley. All right, Mrs. Ritchie.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just, I agree with Mike. That's the point I was going to make. I'm concerned this is one that I'm flagging because I'm not entirely supportive of the cut because I am concerned that there will be other things while we might be remotely doing professional development, there may be other needs that arise because of COVID and the reopening. So this is one of the things that I'm still thinking on. I'm not sure that I support that cut. Thanks.
Mr. Seeny.
I guess the way I look at this list, everybody, is this is a pre-COVID list and there's so many unknowns in front of us. So as we think of the budgeting process, so we just urge you all to almost make the unlikely assumption that we're going to be dealing in a very, a normal school environment. Trying to budget for the unknowns is, is going to be a fool's errand through this cut process. The, the other point of clarification, I didn't hear an answer to Dave's question in regards, what are we contractually obligated to provide in professional development? Thank you.
Dr. Adley or Rich, do you have a number on top of?
I think it was just, it was just, property doesn't fall under the technically professional development column. It's tuition reimbursement, which I think is about $50,000. Richard, is it?
That's correct. So that, that would not be under this line item. If we have teachers' work, we're contractually obligated to pay them $46 an hour.
So the only other thing I would say like this is.
Marge?
Yeah.
Do you, any PD requirements?
No, there are a number of days that were required to provide professional development, but not a dollar amount.
Okay, so we do need to provide some, but it's not tied to a specific dollar amount?
No, it could all be in-house.
Correct. Dr. Adley.
So if, if, if the board were decided to take this one, which could level fund this, and we were to add up all the categories that contribute toward professional development, we'd probably spend, I think it's over, just over $600,000.6 of the budget on over 850. I would, could we live with this? I could live with this. I couldn't live, I, I wouldn't recommend going any further with professional development. We are a capacity building organization. That is, go back in the presentation, that is the strength of this district. And once you actually start to deplete professional development, that is a slippery slope that is really hard to find back from. So I can certainly live with this level funded, because this is what it does, level funded. But I would hope that we wouldn't revisit the professional development line item, the total.
Well, great. So this is part, probably the perfect reason for this exercise, hearing from the administration that they, they believe of the operators in school day to day and the teachers that they can live with this $12,000 cut.
This is Jill. Can I?
Yeah, Mrs. McCann.
Thank you. I encourage us when we talk about professional development to think not only about dollars, but also about time and capacity to learn. And I do agree with Mr. Burke's point and Deb's point that we have a lot that our teachers are going to have to take on. And I think this is actually a line item where I would encourage the administration to, I understand we're doing our very best, but I think we probably are going to have to spend some time doing more in-house work on what technology looks like, more work on how we remediate. I think there's going to be less focus, I would just imagine, where are you a teacher? Less focus on things like Teachers College and pushing forward on, on any sort of new ideas. I believe that professional development belongs inside of a robust implementation plan. And I think what we are having to do right now is implement a new way of learning and that's the priority. So I think that not only do we need to talk about this in terms of dollars, we also need to talk about it in terms of time. And it's important to look at this category from both perspectives. And so I really would like us to push on what we really need to do here now because this kind of planning needs to start getting us ready for entry into the fall. I do support looking at this category as a whole, both for this, both for general education and for special education, respecting the fact that I 100% believe in building capacity. It's just what capacity we build when.
So if I round up both the concerns and the comments and the superintendent's comments, Alan, it sounds like you're very, you're comfortable that at the moment, your staff, both capacity building to Mrs. McCann's point and to Mrs. Ritchie's, Mrs. Ritchie's concerns about new environments, that this line can handle a $12,000 cut?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to maintenance equipment.
So this was a line item on the deferral memo. It would defer the purchase of various maintenance equipment such as auto scrubbers and snowblowers.
Any questions?
Just Tara, just for clarification, this is a deferral. So this would be something we would see in fiscal year '22 budget?
Correct.
Anyone else? Okay, interscholastic equipment rentals and supplies. Mr. Rudel?
This would be to pre-buy the uniforms that were added back into the budget.
Okay, and if not, it would be a cut of $89,000?
Correct.
Any questions?
This is Jill. I don't support pre-buying this type of item. I think that there might be other items I'd be willing to talk about, but not uniforms.
Okay, um, in terms of.
I would just add that this was not in the original budget presented by administration.
And I just have a question on this item. Has an audit been done of all the uniforms to make sure? Often, I know what we do is we fill in missing uniforms when we don't buy a whole new set. Have we done a cost analysis there on the cost to fill in versus, and you don't need to have an answer now, but so that we have a shot, have you done an audit of cost to fill in, a little bit like textbooks? What would we be spending and what would we be saving? And what's the offset there?
So from a budget process, if it's originally on a list that had incorporated that type of analysis because we wouldn't have put it on, that wasn't at the time.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry, I thought you threw it to Dennis. I just had a question. If we didn't use uniforms this spring, and we have a replacement cycle, are those sitting in a warehouse somewhere or sitting in a utility room somewhere, we can just reuse next year instead of repurchasing? Is there any deferral possibilities to put the cycle since we skipped the spring season of sports?
I would have to check on that.
Yeah, let's let the superintendent check. I think some of them are sport specific. Mr. Maroney?
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little confused now. So on this line, it's, column E is 300, I can't see the header. So column E is 327 and then column F is 89,000 savings. The adjusted amount is 237. So we're, to, because Tara, you made the comment that we would save 89,000 if we don't pre-buy? Or?
No.
I'm a little confused with the comment, so.
My comment was if it costs $89,000 to buy all these uniforms, right, and we are looking at that as a cut, what we do in the district is when you, let's say you have, pick a team, rugby, and all the rugby uniforms don't come back, but they're not up for a full new uniform, you still have to fill in the holes from the uniforms that never got returned.
Okay.
You have to go out and buy new uniforms. So I was wondering, that's fine, let's say if we don't buy a particular sports uniforms, but if we find out we've got seven missing uniforms and we have to have a complete set, so we have to go out and buy seven and we didn't refurbish the whole 20, what's, what's the differential there?
No, I think, I think my question is more, this, this line item, the account 10, 2001 is more than just uniforms. So there, there's, there's another $237,000 other than uniforms in that account, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that was my, I didn't understand where we were going, why it was 237. Sorry.
Mrs. Ritchie?
So just for clarification, while this wasn't in the budget that was presented to us by the superintendent, it is part of our uniform replacement cycle. And if we don't make this purchase, it throws off the cycle. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind that we, as a board, prior have committed to this particular replacement cycle. So we will see this in some form down the road.
Yeah, I would say, to me, that's one of the reasons to pre-buy it. It's a purchase that then doesn't back us up, either push out the cycle longer or back us up and give us a bubble of costs next year when, quite frankly, everyone has said the economics might be. or back us up and give us a bubble of costs next year, when quite frankly, everyone has said the economics might be even more tenuous. So that's where I am. Any other questions? We'll move on to technology equipment.
So the next item would be to pre-buy the iPads, which would allow us to take $195,000 reduction. Apple is offering school districts across the country a 5% reduction if items are purchased before mid-June.
Okay, so you need that answer before mention. Okay, any questions?
Mike? Rich, are these, the iPads, who exactly do these iPads go to?
These would go to the ninth graders.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Hi, this is a procedural question. It's John. What, what happens to senior iPads right now?
Those are in the budget to be recycled.
When you say recycled outside the district?
So typically what you can do is you can take the iPads and, or a piece of technology and sell them to a company, which is usually called recycling. So that's what that would be.
All right, so they're not being returned to younger students?
Uh, no.
Follow-up?
Yeah, Mr. Brown?
Is there, is this big, I don't wanna re, iPad ground, but have we contemplated recycling these within district and giving them to ninth graders as sort of a post-COVID cost-saving measure?
So we're, we're actually not guaranteed of the condition we get these things back into. And we're also committed to using the version of the, with the pens for the kids. No, we're not confident, we're not confident we will get someone back, to be honest with you, given the headline, and actually the condition that will come back in and the readiness for the ninth graders.
Miss, Mr. Tranberg?
I was just gonna reiterate what Dr. Adley had said. The iPads that the seniors have are an older model, and the new devices that the freshmen have and the professional development plan that Dr. McGedigan created is, it requires the newer model because of the interactive pens that go with the devices.
And I'm correct, right, that the seniors, they've had these for three years or four years. It's the first set that's really seen a number of years of use. Three, three years. Okay.
I just have a comment on that, Tara. I just wanna comment on that.
Deb, we can't hear you. Could you be a little closer?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
I just wanted to comment on that. I am opposed to repurposing the current seniors' iPads. I have a senior and I can tell you I wouldn't want any freshman to have to use that iPad for four years. So I am adamantly opposed to that. Thanks.
Yeah. Technology.
No, this is Dennis. Just to point out on the recycling of these items, I watched something on CNN that was saying that some school, and I don't know how we can control this, but maybe Dr. McGedigan can find a way to do that possibly, or or someone smarter than I or knows more than I on this. But there are, there are school districts in this country that don't have students who have iPads, and they're literally trying to do remote learning via their phone and trying to read pages off a phone, and they're just scrolling through and it's, you know, can we, can we find a way to help donate them or find a collective to do that? I think it would be great to, to band together with some, some, some other districts in our area that could probably support the repurpose of older iPads that students in lesser districts would probably enjoy immensely.
Mrs. Stein, is that your hand I see?
Sorry, no, it wasn't me. Sorry.
Um, moving on.
Dennis, we can look into whether people would take those or not. If they do, if they do, then seems like a reasonable suggestion.
The next line, technology equipment for $20,000. Mr. Rudel?
This would be to pre-buy the elementary routers.
Any questions? Okay, the next line is teacher?
So this line item was in the deferral memo. It's for a reduction of $56,313. This is an additional teacher savings from going from four and a half to five.
Any questions?
I'd just like to clarify a statement that was made at the RTM Education Committee. I think the term "cutting some heads" was used. This is just done through normal turnover, is that correct? And based on the contract negotiation we had?
Yes, based on the new teacher contract.
Okay, so it, it's, it's a function of a, of a teacher leaving a current position and then being able, the new teacher taking over, taking over five sections versus four and a half?
Right, correct. So we budgeted two, we have three at this point.
Okay, so there are no active headcount reductions around this line item, correct?
Just an FTE reduction.
Any other questions? Transportation driver?
So we currently have a vacant driver position in district. This would change them to 238 days, which would mirror the other driver position.
Questions?
Yeah, this is Dennis. Why, why is that not higher up on the list? Why, why is that a lower priority? Why would we not do 238 days?
It certainly could be. It was listed really as the second staffing adjustment behind the teacher.
Okay, central services adjustments?
So this is a, a combination of a few items because of the tentative agreement that we have in place for the food service operations, as well as some deferrals that we listed, such as the chart of accounts. And then some recruitment, we're able to make a reduction of $68,057. And we did attach a supporting schedule to outline the multiple pluses and minuses.
This also addresses, I think, one of Mr. Brown's questions about whether savings on the, on the food contract. So this sort of taps into some of those savings, and there would still be a balance, if I'm right, Richard, of about 40K?
Correct.
Okay, any questions? Okay, parking fees?
So this was an item on the deferral memo. This would be to record 100% of the parking fees as a revenue to the board's budget.
Questions, comments?
Tara?
Mrs. Ritchie?
I expressed concern about this before, and this is a change of practice, and at this point, I'm not in favor of it.
Oh, it's, sorry, Katie, sorry. I, I express my opinion as well and share Ms. Ritchie's sentiment. I think, you know, I, I'm not comfortable with it, and I, you know, I don't support it.
Mr. Janine?
So Rich, what, what do we actually accomplish? We still need the same dollar amount for whatever we use it for. We're just moving it from one bucket to another, right? We've not used money for any, anything different than what we use it for today, right?
So typically, the, the practice in all the surrounding districts that do charge a parking fee is to credit 100% of the fee to the board's budget. What the practice is now is a portion of it gets credited to the board's budget, and then a portion of that money gets redirected to things like senior events. So rather than redirecting the money towards senior events, which is an atypical practice, we'd likely use balances from swept accounts to fund those when possible.
Do, I think, Mr. Janine's question, Duke, is then what pays for those senior events, correct, Duke?
Yeah, I mean, if we're just gonna go and move money from somewhere else to pay for the same events, I kinda agree with the other comments that it's, it's a change in policy, and I think I'm not there for doing it because we still need those dollars for those events that it pays for.
So the expectation would be to use the dollars from the, the district student activity account, which is where the swept funds get, which currently do not have a purpose that satisfies the amount of money that's in those accounts.
But I think that's a broader conversation that needs to be held with those people that do a lot of fundraising and everything for those accounts, right?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, sorry, it's Mrs. Stein. I, I think we have to have a larger conversation about those accounts before we start tinkering with those dollars.
This is Jill. Just directionally, I like the idea, however, of using typical accounting practices. And so this is the kind of change I think is, is correct directionally, whether or not we, as a board, are willing to do it this fiscal year or the next.
So, just so I understand, what we're saying is that the funds would now go to offset the, the budget. These other activities would be the cost of which would be passed on to parents and fundraising activities. If we currently have it in the student activities count, that's great, but if we didn't, we would be fundraising for those events from now on.
Correct. So the typical practice in districts is to charge like an event fee or a, or a class fee.
Okay. Any other questions? And, and is gate receipts a similar issue?
It would be the same thing, yes.
Okay, so any other questions that include gate receipts?
So just to be clear, gate receipts go into a student activity fee and don't offset the cost of police or?
Correct. The gate receipts are the collection of revenue for like football ticket sales and basketball, things like that. It goes into the student activity account. The police expenses are in the operating account.
So, so the revenues tied to the events, which we have added expenses, don't offset those?
In current practice, no.
Yeah, I would just say in the future, let's look at this policy.
Yeah, I'd wanna run through that student activity account on gate receipts, or student activities policy handbook on gate receipts. We'll probably need some clarity as a board before we move forward with that one, one way or the other. Music teachers?
So the next three really go together. It is to make the music director position a 1.0, which allows for a reduction because of the new teacher contract in the music teacher line item, but then also to make it a 10-month position as opposed to a 12-month position. So it's really the three together.
And what is the impact to that going from 12 to 10? What's the impact on the position?
The teacher position?
Do you have all planning over the summer, or?
Well, the teacher position will be assumed, so that, that doesn't impact the scheduling. And the summer, we think we can, we think we can, we can think we can manage during the, during the shortened duration. And we have, we're actually interviewing right now, and I think we've got excellent candidates. I think that's right.
We have a strong pool of candidates. Also, Chris Tranberg spoke to Rick Sadlon, and we did an analysis of when Rick used his vacation days, and he used his vacation days in the summer. So we feel that treating this position like the other department chairs as a 10-month or 197-day position won't have any effect on the music program.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on this line item, or these line item?
Okay. No, I'd just like to say thank you for that one. That's the, I appreciate that kind of work where we're talking about trying to, again, make things comparable. But that's, I appreciate that analysis. Thank you.
We'll move on to interscholastic stipends.
This would be to defer the four new coaching stipends that were added to the budget.
Questions?
Tara?
So, Tara, just, just, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Rich, can you tell me, I mean, obviously, coaching is part of academics, it's, sports are academics. Can you tell me about the educational impact on scrubbing these four assistant coaching positions?
So I believe they were added to support the, the no-cut philosophy, so that would not be possible if they were deferred or eliminated.
So just so I understand, if we do not, if we approve this cut, it's tantamount to bringing about a cut policy, which obviously would be decided in the athletic department, correct?
Correct.
Mrs. Ritchie?
So just for clarification on that, are we saying that we're now mandating cuts across all sports? Or now the four sports that are losing these coaches will now have to make cuts? Because I don't think that sounds, I mean, if we're gonna start mandating cuts, then I think we should be equitable. When do we do that?
So can I, Chris, Chris Mefridonia and I took a look last year with Dr. Landon with the goal that all freshman sports, to the extent possible because of, other than field limitations, would be no-cut. So that as many freshmen would have a place to have an activity when they got there. So these are sports where we could do no-cut if we add a coach. There were other sports like softball where you just can't have 50 kids on the, on the field. So even though there is a freshman, there would be a freshman team, there would be a cut. So that was the philosophy of how we got to these four new coaches.
Dr. Adley, do you have something? So I guess, to push a little bit on the point that we could decide to look at cut, no-cut, up and down the system, but I do think then that we'd be looking at saying then there are cuts on all freshman teams. We don't have some that have no cuts, some that cut because, you know, they can't fit on the field, and some that cut because we didn't fund their coaches. Or what we're saying is that all sports would, all freshman sports at a minimum would all be cutting.
Well, I don't wanna say that scientifically that definitely for each sport. I think some of these, for instance, are for swimming and swim in terms of supervision, so. But I guess is it matriculatism that we needed added for supervision or for not, not to cut, I guess it's one of the same.
Well, I, so I just wanna, if we, we put in a coach two years ago because, on a team, because they, they didn't wanna cut and it was choice, and now we're saying, well, we don't have the money to fund it for A, B, and C team, are we eliminating, I'm trying to get to a somewhat equitable, it's not just like, well, these four teams, all of a sudden, you, you can't cut. Like, I, I'm trying to understand the philosophy so I can, I can back the cut, quite frankly.
I think at this point, aren't we just staying with the status quo and then looking for, maybe we need to have a full policy and implication conversation, but kinda like student activity fees? I think maybe until we're ready with a full conversation, we could just stay status quo.
Well, I don't think we're saying status quo in any other areas of the million-dollar cut, so I don't think we can status quo here. That's just my opinion. Mrs. Ritchie?
Tara, I agree. I think if we're, if we're saying these coaches come out, it means some sports have to cut, but others don't have to cut. I think that's not equitable. And given the situation we're in, if we're gonna start asking some teams to cut, then I think we have to be more consistent in that practice in these times. I mean, I don't wanna see us lose freshman sports, but if it means all sports are required to cut to reduced expenditures across athletics, then I think that's something maybe we need to consider. And I just, out of my recollection, recollection is pertaining to the swim and dive coach, it had nothing to do with cutting. It had to do with safety and equity on the, the pool deck. So that was maybe for that coach.
Do you have that too? Are these staffings for safety reasons and supervision, or are they for cut, no-cut? I saw Mr. Burke's hand, and then I see Mr. Brown's hand.
Yeah, just for a point of information, and I, as we've been going through this process, I, I've tended to not, to whether I'm for or against a particular cut, because I'm really just trying to information gather for later. But with regard to this particular line, I would absolutely wanna know what kind of cut impact or a impact on eliminating a freshman sport this line would have, because I would absolutely act on how I would treat this cut. So I, I don't wanna vote for this cut and then find out later, oh, the way we're gonna enact this cut is we're going to have cuts on teams that we typically have not had previously.
So I think, have we lost members? Mr. Senior, are you still on?
I'm still here.
Okay, Mr. Janine, are you still on? I think we've lost you.
Yeah, I, I saw, I saw Duke come off. Oh, no, it looks like he's back on now.
Okay, I just want, don't wanna go too far unless everyone.
Sorry, it just, the whole, it just said you're now disconnected. I'm back. Thanks.
Okay. All right, Mr. Senior?
You know, we're, we're going through this and getting more information, and we're getting, given a lot of feedback. We're cutting a lot of cuts, and so now that number we have to get to is even further away. So I've just, you know, I haven't heard anybody add anything or.
So I think we'll get to that. So I think we'll get to that.
Just an observation. We're digging a bigger hole to, to, to reach a number.
Well, I think, I don't think we've added or cut yet. I think people are expressing their opinions. And after we go through this, we'll be, if anyone has another area they'd like admin recommendation on, we'll hit that once we get to the bottom of this list. Inter- elementary, intramural, oh, Mr. Maroney and Mr. Brown.
Going back to the, to the stipends, I'm with Mrs. Ritchie. I seem to recall that this was a big safety issue for not just boys swim and dive, but the cheerleading as well, that they can't notice everybody who's doing the, the stunts and the, and the lifts. But my bigger question is, and, and unfortunately, they're not together, but are, is this a, is this a savings of $18,000? And if we cut freshman sports, that would be in addition to? Or would that be rolled into that number? Maybe that's a question later, but I don't, I want to understand that difference.
Mr. Rudel, do you want to answer that?
I believe this would be in addition, but I will confirm with Chris.
Mr. Brown?
Hi, just want to follow up real quick. After cooping everybody up for the past few months, I would be reluctant generally to give cuts to anything that allows them to be outdoors in the fresh air, having any sort of athletic activity. And to follow up on Mr. Senior's point, there is still 12004 legal services. Would love to find more about that later when the time's right. So I think there are other things out there we want to discuss.
Okay, elementary intramurals.
This would be to eliminate the elementary intramural program.
Rich, can someone just outline which schools have that program?
So majority of the schools with the exception, so all the schools with the exception of homes have been using DARIAN after school for elementary intramurals. Homes has been, has not. So this would really affect homes.
And do we have participation numbers of that?
We could pull them.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Other questions?
And or, and or why would?
I think Dennis froze up. Dennis, you froze up. You want to say that again?
Sorry, what, if, if we have the numbers for homes, and then the, the follow-up question is, why is homes unique? Why wouldn't homes roll up into the other four elementary schools?
Okay, we can get back, admin can get back on that. Sports programs, MMS.
So the next three really go together. This would be to eliminate the middle school intramural program.
Comments, questions? Mr. Maroney?
Dennis, again, same thing. If we could have a number of how many students are participating in those.
For this one, it's about 250.
Okay.
Okay, clubs and councils?
So again, that, that is combined with the middle school intramurals. That's the stipend for middle school intramurals.
Okay. Student interns.
So the two go together, student interns and substitutes. This would be to eliminate the student intern program at all seven schools.
Any comments or questions on that?
Yes. Wait, but did we skip, did we skip eliminating DHS intramurals just before I have, before we talk about the student interns?
No, we just did that one. They said. Rich, you want to answer that again?
So yeah, the 4,000 is for high school intramurals. The clubs and councils, inter- intramurals, middlesex and sports program, middlesex are for the middle school, those three.
Thank you.
And substitutes, any comments or questions?
In, in general, I am in support of, you know, anything that provides more support to our teachers and students. So I would love to hear from the administration's perspective how much work it is for a teacher to get a student intern up and running, and then what teachers feel they can get from student interns once that transition program happens. You know, on the one hand, I feel like it's the kind of thing I hate to see go. On the other hand, again, I worry about the total load that our teachers are taking on.
Yeah, I think they, I think the principals and teachers value, value these interns, because some of the cuts that we had to do first time around through the budget, this was a discussion at the time. They are very valuable to them and provide a, provide a dependable quality, reliable experience for the kids in the classrooms. And it all doesn't mean that we have to, on a regular basis, pull some interventionists from other areas to cover the classes. I don't, Marge, you want to say anything further than that?
Right, so we have two interns at each school because they have 10 weeks when they do their student teaching, so they're not available to cover classes. So the teachers don't really have a huge job in getting them ready, you know, to be interns. They come and they cover when we have absences. So that's why you can see that Rich has increased the substitute line, because if we don't have interns, we'll need more daily subs should teachers be absent. I, I think that the reason that we made this cut was that in the face of laying off some of our own teachers, it was hard to justify paying the tuition of student interns. And I think Rich did some comparisons. We are one of very few districts who in tough budget times hasn't eliminated the interns.
Any other questions on this?
Deb, I mean Tara, sorry.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I just had a question. It's 206, 85 we're eliminating, but the substitutes, putting them in is 84. I just, I was wondering about the price differential there. Is it less time that comes in, less hours? Or where's that, what explains that gap? Is it man hours or?
So as Marge mentioned, there's 10 weeks where the student interns aren't available. So we're, we already really have daily substitutes for those 10-week period of time. It's that other period of time when the student interns are here, where we would need replacement daily substitute cost.
So the intern cost is fixed over that 10-week period, whether there's something or not something?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Talented and gifted.
Sorry, Tara.
All right, Mrs. Ritchie and then Mr. Maroney.
I just, on this particular item, is this something that we would see as a temporary stoppage? So in other words, if things get better, we'd like to see these student interns return to the schools?
Well, it would be, it would be a nice thing to, to support the profession that way. And also, we get back, we get it back in experience in our lab. It'll be, it would be nicer to bring them back, whether we're able to or not. I mean, it's the same, I respect that they would still be open to that on any given year.
Mr. Maroney?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the fact that we don't want to eliminate normal teachers. But to me, the question is, and I don't have the information, and maybe Marge can provide that, but how, because I would think that the student internship would be a, basically, on a job interview for the student interns. And what percentage of the student interns do we end up hiring to our staff?
It's a, it's a very small percentage.
Small percentage, okay.
Okay, talented and gifted.
This would be to eliminate the high school talented and gifted program.
Questions?
I have a question.
Mrs. Stein?
Can you just, now that we're closer to the fall, can you get us the enrollment number for that program?
It's over 20.
Over 20?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So it'd be still one class, not two?
Well, we're not, we're not, we haven't made a proposal to add to the budget. So currently, it would have to be one at this point.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, librarians. Sorry, Mrs. McCann?
I actually have a question back on the student interns, if that's okay. I'm, if I understood correctly, that we, part of what we do is pay some of their tuition. Is there an opportunity to negotiate the terms at all? Did I understand that correctly?
So I had tried that in another district, and, you know, the program is what it is. So, I mean, we could go back and try in these times to see if we could, but previously I wasn't so successful.
Anything else, Mrs. McCann? Or is that good?
No, thank you.
Okay, librarian?
So the next two line items really go together. We looked at our, our DURG in terms of how middle school librarians, libraries are staffed. The best comparison really is New Canaan, because they're heavily enrolled middle schools such as ours. And they have a structure of one middle school librarian media specialist, but with a teacher, with a para. So this would be to reduce one librarian, library media specialist, but add a library para.
Questions?
Yeah, this is Jill. My understanding is that one of the reasons why you might want to have a librarian versus a para is if your librarian does a lot of instruction, both, and that secondarily, that a lot of our librarians are supporting our teacher populations with a lot of their technology. So while I, I think the comparison is apt, what I'm curious to understand is how we're using our libraries, and if we use our libraries in the same way as New Canaan and the other districts you looked at.
I, I personally don't know about New Canaan juice, of, of on-the-ground juice. But what, what you have articulated, Jill, is correct. Typically, that is the way the librarians are used. So there's going to be a loss in terms of a different, a different model. Definitely would be a loss in those areas that you just spoke about. And I, I guess you could probably say, particularly now, that they, the librarians play such a key role in, in what we're doing right now, in terms of what, what we're preparing the kids for and what's likely to be the situation when we come back. So I, so I recognize that.
I would ask then, to that point, how does that play into all the work that's being done on the library reimagine?
I, I'm not so sure that, I'm not so sure, Mr. McLean, that it's as much an impact on the libraries we imagine as it is just on the ground in terms of helping teachers at this point, in terms of the technology. But I don't, I don't think it, I don't know that it's a library imagined impact significantly.
All right. Teacher aides.
This would be to eliminate the high school testing para.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Danine?
So Marge, we, we had a conversation about, I guess, teacher aides. And I guess, just, I don't know, real quick, like, you had talked about trying to figure out what their role is during e-learning. But have any learnings come out of that as to what we actually need day in and day out? Some of these people were not necessarily used as a resource initially. I know you're all trying to figure that out, but I, I'm not sure I understand that teachers aides, are they specific to children's needs in each individual classroom?
So the special education paraprofessionals are obviously specific to each student's needs. The instructional aides do some work in the libraries at the elementary schools, and they also help with coverage for lunch and recess. But then the principals will also identify those general education classrooms that can use another set of hands for support. I think what we found in e-learning is that the students miss their paraprofessionals, and the paraprofessionals have been more than eager to learn new skills to support them. But I think Shirley might want to add something.
Shirley?
Sorry, thanks. No, you said it perfectly, Marge, but I did want to add to the high school para. Somehow we'd be able to support that testing center with other personnel. So the notion is we still would look at ways to support that testing center.
The, the, the test and para at the high school, which is typical in any high school, they are well-valued, believe me, by staff, because there's a continuity of experience that our students experience when they go down there to make up tests. The coordination is done with by para, with teachers, and with the teachers in general. There's a better coordination with it. So while it may not appear to be a big loss, it will be a loss in terms of how things are delivered. And maybe even for some of our most needy students, it'll be a last, last coordination. Teachers are going to, I mean, I'm not arguing against it, but I understand them. But I'm just telling you, there's an impact. When you say there's not an impact, they think there are. So.
And if I may just add to that.
We're not, not going to be the same, even though it's a certified staff member, but that's not going to be the same.
But if I may add to that, Dr. Allen, it's not just for students with learning differences. There are many students who access that testing center throughout the day.
So we're using some of our teachers to go to four and a half, five, to man the teaching center. That clearly wasn't our plan for how they should utilize that fifth class.
And it's, it's through, it's through creation, though.
Okay. Okay. We'll make do with what we have. Art teacher?
This would be a reduction of a 1.0 art teacher. It would make the elementary art teachers itinerant, so they would travel across schools. So it'd be fraction of FTE reductions across the elementary schools.
Okay, and then the related health insurance. Is there anyone who has questions to that between art teacher and the related health?
I'm sorry, Tara, can I just touch on the art teachers real quick?
Sure, go ahead, Deb.
So they'll still be getting the same amount of art in the class or in the classrooms, but it just means that instead of having a, a teacher dedicated to the school, the teacher will float around the district, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And let's run through these additional reductions of no pre-purchases.
Tara, this is a question, Dennis has a question on art. So I appreciate Mr. Senior's point on that we can't budget for COVID, that we don't know what it is. But having a teacher travel to all five schools doesn't seem like the, what the CDC is recommending to limit engagement of people. So are we saying that this teacher will be going to all five elementary schools?
Well, there'll be, there'll be travel, but the, the schedule has to be worked out, but there'll be travel among the schools, definitely.
Yeah, that doesn't seem like a, a savings in the long term for me, but.
Alan, it'll be like the PE teachers, right? Who are somewhat.
Yeah, I have other staff members who take travel, I, but.
But yes, it presents an interesting dilemma, given our current environment.
Yeah, and I appreciate Mr. Senior's point, because I think we can go quickly down a rabbit hole. So I, and maybe this is something we, you know, the board, Board of Finance did say that COVID-related things, we need to come back to them with. And maybe this is one of those elements that we can cut and then go back and say, we can't, we can't do this in the, in the current environment or the future environment, sorry.
So.
Sorry.
I will just put a little bit, my own finer point on that, that COVID comment. I, I agree in the sense that there are things that are going to pop up that we couldn't anticipate, or new guidelines that are issued to us in August, depending on the situation. There's also things that, that I think would be reasonable and or common sense. And itinerant teaching happens in our district. And I think, Mr. Maroney, you bring up a, a good point, that it's something we'll need to consider. We know it happens, we'll have, you know, there's the unknown unknown, and then there's the, we have to make do with what we know. We can't pretend we know nothing. And then there's our regular, normal school year. I put it into three buckets, but, but I, I think they're all important. We'll move forward to high school and elementary and council.
Tara?
Yep.
Tara, sorry, before we move ahead, I have a request. I'm hoping that administration can give us, since we know we, we already were reducing in our last budget go around for fiscal year '21, that FTEs had come down. I'd love for administration to give us that same running total so we can see where we go in terms of FTEs through this process, if that's possible.
I just didn't catch all of that. Did you catch that, Richard?
So I think you just want a total cumulative list of FTE reduction?
Yes.
Yep, that's, yep.
High school and elementary, clubs and councils.
So this would be to eliminate the low-enrolled high school clubs and then all elementary clubs and councils.
Questions?
This is Dennis.
Mr. Maroney and then Mr. Ritchie?
How do we define low?
We looked at ones that are around 10 students.
Okay.
My request is I'd love to see these, not those numbers separated out, because I'm struggling with eliminating clubs and councils at the.
Deb, it's really hard to hear you. Okay, can you hear me? It's a little bit like you're underwater. Okay.
Maybe you can hand.
Much better.
Is that better? It was probably. It was probably my hand. I'm trying to hold up my iPad. So what I'd like to see is segregated out what we would do with the high school and then elementary, because I just, I'd like to have those numbers for reference, if we can do that. Thanks.
Sure.
Any other?
Can you tell me, with regard to the elementary clubs and councils, it's been a while since my kids were at that level, what are those clubs and councils? What are those typical activities? Because we're looking at cutting all of them, not just the ones that are low-attended.
So each school has three, with the exception of, I believe, Royal, which has two. Some have like a stock market club, some have like a student body club, things like that.
Other questions? Mrs. McCallum?
Yeah, thank you. So, Rich, you're not, when you say student body, you don't mean student government, like the?
Not like what high school would be, no.
No, but the, but the elementary schools have effectively a student government. Is that what you're talking about? Student council?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're talking about student council, safety, ambassadors?
Correct. If we control, correct.
Yes. All of it gone.
Thank you.
Other, I can only see Jill and Deb and Rich at the moment, so if anyone has something, please jump in. Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move on to freshman sports.
So this would be to eliminate freshman sports.
So it's packaged as freshman sports. I would say that we would have ongoing discussions of whether that would be up and down the system a little bit, as opposed to just, just taking the freshman sports. But for the sake of the, the number for the minute, if the board showed decided to do it in a different way across the sports, as opposed to just one sport, that could be considered. But now we're at things that are, and this is the problem. But anyway.
Mrs. Ritchie?
So again, I brought this up earlier, this would be a huge loss, I think, for DHS. So I'm wondering, I'm going to request that we look at making all sports have cuts and what that would be in terms of a reduction. Would that make an impact if we did that? I don't, I don't know how many sports cut versus how many sports don't cut. So I'm just wondering if that's an option, rather than looking at the full cut of the freshman sports.
Any other comments or questions?
Mrs. Stein, I've got my hand raised, sorry.
Stein?
I agree with Mrs. Ritchie. I think for a lot of reasons, having freshman sports is important, the eight to nine transition. We've talked about having another connection to the school to, even if you're a freshman, you do interface with the other teams you meet up or classmates. When we talk about all the social emotional stuff, I think it's critical. So I agree, I'd rather see a look at cut, no cut, maybe a look at transportation, where perhaps freshman teams don't travel, right? And it's more of like an inner mural, and they still have an opportunity to be together, or fewer competitions, and maybe it's only the varsity level that goes on buses. But creatively looking at athletics, I know there's a lot of money in there, and it's a big budget, but maybe there's other ways to look at it and make reductions.
I mean, I recognize that point, Katie, that engagement in ninth grade, and success in ninth grade is a big indicator for success in high school, so that's acknowledged.
Mrs. Ritchie? I can't see you off, so again, I don't want to keep calling the same people, have anyone feel ignored. Feel free to jump in.
So I just want to piggyback on Katie's comment, so that's another thought to maybe look at, just keeping competitions to CAC and FCAC. And if we're going beyond FCAC and CAC, what are the cost implications are? Is there, you know, let's just stay with the regular schedule, give them some good competitions, but, you know, what happens if we don't pay for, you know, the stuff that goes beyond that? And I have no idea what that could potentially be, but that might be something else to look at.
Mr. Dine?
So Dr. Adley, what, what are some of the conversations across the DURG with respect to this? And are there others that have already gone down that path?
Honestly, I can't say that. I know that, I know that Wes at one point was talking about it, but I honestly don't know if other people have cut the, they. Rich, do you know anybody?
I believe Ridgefield's discussing it, but I think they're the only ones in our DURG at the moment.
There was discussion.
Mr. Burke?
Maybe it would be useful, you know, for the district, kind of following on Duke's point, is to have our athletic department be in conversation with the rest of the CAC. I would hate for Darien to be the only school that's not sending freshmen on road trips. I mean, I think that would be unacceptable, but if it was done in conjunction with an overall league policy, that would be something different and perhaps more palatable. But otherwise, it would be a non-starter.
Any other comments or questions?
John?
Mr. Seeny?
I'll just raise it. I know administration doesn't want to address it right now, but student activity fees are used in other districts of our DURG, so a revenue offset to some of this.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to moving strings from third grade to fourth grade.
So this would be a reduction of one teacher to move the start of strings from third grade to fourth grade.
Seeing and hearing none?
Tara, I'm sorry, Tara. I'm sorry, I was waving. So I just, I want to make sure I have my information correct. We've had a third grade, third grade strings program for 50 years, is that correct?
How many years? Yep.
Did I hear, is it 30? I thought I heard 30, maybe it was 50, I can't, how long do we know how long third grade strings has been in place?
I don't know if Chris has got that information. Chris, do you know how long that's in place? Or Marge here, here longer than I am, so anybody know?
I just received some emails, so I'm just curious, you know, I think the board received some emails.
So I think we'll have to let the administration get back to us. I don't think they have an answer on the duration of the program, or how long it's been in the district. Mr. Dine?
So maybe I'm missing something here, but how does moving it from one grade to the next save us the money?
It doesn't start. You have one last teacher, service to the grade level, so literally doesn't start until the next, the fourth grade.
But you're doing it in third and fourth now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then I don't, I think everyone understands the related health insurance costs, but are there any questions on that last item? Okay, so now, are there any board questions on items that they wanted to ask the administration about?
Oh, it's, Tara, it's Katie. Before we open it up to new items, can we just talk about the summer school and the change in loss of revenue? Rich, I just want to understand, assuming we can open fields, we had said the law, the loss of field rental revenue is now down, up by, I don't know how to say, $15,000. You're saying because we can open them to the outside organizations that had booked the fields, it's $15,000. Why is it only $15,000?
So there's still be limited amounts of participants, we would expect, so we wouldn't expect to recoup the entire amount.
But would there be more hours for the fields to be rented since the summer school hours wouldn't be in effect?
It's possible. I mean, we could take another look at it, but not all have indicated that they would want to as well.
Okay. May, perhaps we could go to something, because if we could get some of that revenue back, if some of those, you know, organizations would want to do smaller groups over longer periods of time, whatever the rules will be, assuming they're open.
Okay, so any new items? I don't know, oh, Mike?
Okay. So all right, at this point, we're floating different ideas that weren't on here for cuts? Is that where we're at procedurally?
I think what I've heard is that there's some board members who have some questions, and I think the best way to look at it is to pose the questions and understand why the administration didn't go there as the operators of the schools day to day.
All right, well, I would ask a question, if you could look back, or did we look back at the legal budget at 270, understanding, I'm not proposing a specific cut here, but I think it might be an area that might be an opportunity for some savings.
Can I, can I just procedurally make a request?
Sure.
As people are bringing up items that are in addition to administration, could you please reference account and line numbers? Just if, you know, maybe grab your handy budget book and go, just so for our reference as we move ahead, so we know, you know, even if you just have the RC, just so we know what to reference.
Yeah, it'll help.
This was, the legal fees were RC 16, administration line 609, object number 12004, legal fees currently set at 200, I'm sorry, trying to follow along the line here, $257,000 in the current budget.
Okay. Dr. Adley, any reason why?
Well, we have a, we have a rate increase as a chip and equipment, and I don't anticipate in the future, particularly with what we're dealing with, that I foresee the legal fees, our legal situation has been reduced.
Tara, it's Katie. Although this may be legal in the special ed RC, I think Jill raised a good point about compensatory services we may need to provide, and I think with that, there may be some legal fees associated, depending on where we are and what's going on. I would not be supportive of cutting legal in this sort of scenario we're in.
Okay, any other questions on legal? Mr. Brown?
So, following up, I was going to ask on legal, but Mike got there, I agree that that may be due for a true-up. Looking at RC 16 generally, on the operating side, a number of items in there, you know, 13003, 25014, let's see, 13012, 13011, definitely 13003 again. I don't know if any of these have been looked at, and we have room on those, given some of the changes to how we're operating in the more remote email and less physical documents going out the door.
Dave, just taking notes, 1303 is what item?
I'm sorry, Tara, what was that?
13003.
Other board expenses booked at 25,000?
You're cutting off. Alan and I will, will take the notes after, which they were.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a little jumpy, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to follow up. But generally, RC, anything in RC 16 operating, not, not the other parts, but anything in RC 16 operating, I would love another look at.
Okay. Dr. Adley, is there any, anything on there in particular you want to comment at the moment, or do you want to come back next meeting?
I think I'll have to come back, because we have reviewed this. Richard, is anything else there? But we've reviewed this line.
It's primarily the filming of board meetings.
Oh. Okay, so admin can come back with further comments on that next meeting. Anyone else?
Tara, just on the legal, I would also add, during our discussions with the Board of Finance, it came up that there is a sub-account in the general fund that is allocated to, I believe, special education, and i.e., and/or legal associated with special education, somewhere as $100,000 that hasn't been tapped in a number of years.
Yeah, so that's, that's a separate account that they, they hold, and we go back, we can go back if needed. We haven't had to go back. There have been times we've actually asked to put some surplus in that to keep that growing in case we needed it on a particularly rainy day fund. But you are correct, there is a $100,000 fund specific to special education that we would need to go through the appropriation process for, but it does exist on the town side. Any other, are there any other items that you'd like the administration either to comment on or be prepared to comment on for next meeting?
You got a number of hands going up, so.
Okay, I can't, all I see, John, is your picture. You have no camera on, so John, Jill, John, you first, and then Jill, and then Devin.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm up?
Yes.
Okay. Again, sorry, I know my RCs here, I have them in my office, but I listed legal, turnover, substitutes.
Okay, wait, wait. Good, I'm legal. Turnover, what's your question on turnover?
Areas that can be looked at for incremental cuts, substitutes.
John, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut you off, but substitutes in which RC?
Across all RCs, across every school. I already mentioned professional development and library books of 101, 225, I think that was at the high school. And then Project Lead the Way as well, is a new curriculum initiative.
So just, I think we clarified last time, Project Lead the Way is not a new curriculum. These are new units of study within the curriculum.
Sorry, semantics, yes.
No, I think, I mean, because I think Mr. Brown brought this up last time, it's not a new program, it's just a matter of the curriculum.
If there's any incremental costs associated with it, then that would be my suggestion.
And then you cut out a little bit, you said library books, is that correct?
Yeah, there in high school, it's 101, 225, if that could be deferred. Those were kind of my major items that I thought, again, not total elimination, but if you could take, we heard a lot of people that were opposed to cuts, so we're going to have to make them up elsewhere, so if these could be looked at.
Does the administration have any comment? I think we commented a little bit on legal, on turnover, substitutes, we discussed professional development, or library books, or Project Lead the Way?
Well, I have to take order, Project Lead the Way. I think the board knows what the deal is there in terms of this is for the eighth graders, and it's, it's more comprehensive, where we just, I just got off the, I just don't think we want to be stopping things, like I just got off the entry plan, talking about steam and moving things forward. And there was, there was support for moving that program forward, and I would advocate that we continue to use it. Library books, like, we could go down these line items, supplies, nickel and dime, if that's what you want to do, it's just, I don't know why we pick on library books, but.
As opposed to freshman sports or something like that?
Yeah, well, I would, honestly, I would stick with the books and the information, the stuff that we actually need. You can't just like start taking the infrastructure away that supports things. So, I mean, you know, whether it's library books or some other category, if we talk about their substitutes, we're tight enough as it is. We also increased in the teacher's contract some personal days for people, so we worry of doing that. We did analyze the actual turnover for the number of, for the number of staff members. I don't know, we felt comfortable with that, I think, in like on our side, it was about TAM. Richard, was that about right?
So we are keeping track for next year. Currently, we have 10 teachers that we know will leave the district, but of those 10, three are on a very low step, including a bachelor step seven, and a master step four, and a master step five. So it's likely we won't see any turnover savings there for those three specifically, and we did budget 24.
And I will say that when I have been meeting with the area HR directors, that at least at this point, people are not leaving the way they normally do because of the uncertainties of the time. So maybe they will, but not yet.
We touched on professional development, and I'm not saying we can't come back and they.
No, I understand, these are just food for thought, and budget control was the last one, I think, that we haven't talked about.
Well, budget controls, you know, it's there, obviously. Wasn't used this year. We don't know what we're facing, you know, coming up for next year, so, you know, I'll be honest, that's something that, as a practice, I'm not familiar, or I don't have access to, to be honest with you, I've never had access to budget control. So it's a nice thing to have, in all honesty, we haven't touched it, but I would. But I wouldn't bank on some of those numbers necessarily with the kindergartners. So that's that's something to be considered, and that's a board decision. We never put it on because we felt that with COVID-19 and what we're dealing with, that we probably shouldn't put it on. So that's certainly a board discussion as to whether you some of that, not all of it.
And Rich, section wise, I know you reported out on this in the beginning, but given the hour, help me out. Section wise, originally, we but we budgeted four budget controls because we had five sections breaking, and we are where now?
So excluding kindergarten, we are plus one.
So we're plus one, and then we still have to wait for our kindergarten enrollments.
Correct.
And this is one of those areas where I think that we probably, if we need to put it in that middle unknown category, certainly we're hearing that social distancing and class sizes will be limited. So it's just something for board members to think about. I'm not really taking a position yet on it. Okay, Jill, I think I saw your hand. John, is that your list?
Yeah, and again, we heard a lot of opposition to a lot of line items. We're gonna have to make up for them somewhere else to get to that 1.025, at least. I just want to remind people that.
Yeah, I just, I don't know that, I think what you're hearing is people's like initial thoughts going through this. I think that's why we're gonna need to take a week, think about it, digest it, ask questions before, you know, any decision is made. Mrs. McCammon, did I see your hand go up?
Yes, you did. I I looked at a couple of things. I also looked at the library and wanted to, I looked at two different things in the library. I looked at the funding for the Makerspace, which is called Resource Materials. Sorry, let me get you that specific. And I just was thinking that's the kind of thing that we could put off in the current environment, particularly given that we have that library project coming. And then the second aspect of library I looked at was really thinking about libraries in, again, the new construct we're looking at, that maybe how much we really need to do in physical accessions, how much we really want to do online, and then what how much cooperation perhaps we can get with the public library, maybe to supplement what we don't do. So I would ask the administration to look at both material accessions and online subscriptions and and also talk to the public library more toward to getting towards a partnership and maybe an optimal number there, and perhaps we could also realize some savings. I looked at travel related expenses. If I understood the CDC memo correctly, field trips would not be allowed. We have $7,500 in field trips on in RC 19. So I just think it's also a year where parents may not be as comfortable sending their kids on a bus, even if they're not going far. And I, as I understood the CDC regulations, they weren't recommending people come in either. I think there's other travel related expenses, like Marge, I think as a whole, I certainly support recruitment, but I was wondering whether or not we'll that we'll be doing in person recruitment fairs and whether or not we'd still face that some of that kind of travel going forward. And I think there may be other similar travel expenses in PD, for example. PD and curriculum, I'll just repeat myself. I think it's a new world. I'd really like to see the administration take a position about what kinds of PD we're going to be doing, and I think also what type of curriculum support we're going to need. Again, I think remediation will be a priority, and while I would really love for us to just continue on the path that we're on, I think we are going to have to stop saying, what does it take to remediate and what do we have to give up as a result? And so, you know, I'm happy to fund what we need to fund, but I think there's probably some areas where we may not be moving forward, and we may have to just kind of recalibrate what we've already done, which probably would look different from a funding perspective. I think, I think that's. Oh, there's one other thing. Rich, in your budget, there's some training also. And it was, I think, 34,000, 10,000, by my estimate, about 10,000 is for immunists. But again, with respect to Dr. Adley's point about building capacity, I certainly support that on the whole, but I'm looking for ways to to try and not change things we don't have to. So I looked at that number as well.
Dr. Adley, any comments, or do you want to come back next meeting on some of these?
Well, travel related expenses and any recruitment, we can certainly look at those. Those are reasonable things. You know, certainly clearly reasonable things that that we haven't looked at. We can revisit again. Richard, would you just comment on your immunist training again for me, please?
So we did include part of the central services adjustment.
You did, forgive me.
Okay, anyone else?
Hey, Tara, I don't think you can see me. It's Duke.
Hi, Duke.
Dr. Adley and Rich, I would just ask, in the interest of continuing to look at efficiencies and looking out a little longer term, as next year is going to be challenging too. So something I've always looked at is the, it's under 21501, I guess, principal, director, secretaries. So we've got two in each elementary school. We've got four at the middle school. We've got four at the high school. So we've got 18 administrative assistants in just, you know, I think you've said they're needed and you've looked at it, and I appreciate that. But I think we need to continue to look at it and how we run schools and how efficiently we do that. 18 administrative assistants across the schools still seems a little high to me. So that's something I would like to see, you know. Do we go to a floating pool where needed and just understand more kind of roles and responsibilities? And then, not relative to what children need or the paras, but just the teachers aides throughout the elementary schools. You've got, the average elementary school has six aides, a couple of them have five. Middlesex has two, and then the high school has nine. So I don't know if that's specific to needs. It just seems off in terms of the middle school having two and the high school having nine. But again, roles and responsibilities and efficiencies.
So my quick, my quick comment there, Mr. Deline. We reduced three, I think we reduced three secretaries in this budget, three paraprofessionals thus far. I'll say for the elementary, first of all, the high school and the middle school are huge. And the two elementaries, it's not unreasonable to have 11 month and 10 month positions. In fact, I think it's necessary. And I actually wouldn't consider touching those. Certainly can look at the other schools, but we could look at the other schools too. I can understand why you might ask it, but but I think they are, I don't think that they're overstaffed.
I'm not saying they're overstaffed. I'm looking for continued efficiencies. I don't understand how on the middle sex, you have two teacher aides, and that's the biggest middle middle school in the state, and the high school, you have nine aides.
Yeah, can I just write, Duke, those are campus monitors at the high school, and we did eliminate one of the other instructional aides, and the second one tonight is being recommended. So it's five campus monitors, which do the security, the reading power that we already got rid of, and then, or we already eliminated a position, and then the testing center pair. So that's why the high school and the the middle school just has the one campus monitor.
Okay, I appreciate that. But then we also should think about, again, we've talked about this during normal budget cycle, how those things are titled. That makes a world of difference when you say campus monitor versus teacher aide.
Right, understood.
Tara? Mr. Maroney?
Sorry. Yeah, I have a couple of ones. So Mr. Seeny already brought up RC 18, 310 budget control. You know, for me, if we eliminate the one or take the one teacher that we have already gone, we go from 264 to 198. To me, that's 20% right there. I'll take that at any day. Again, Mr. Seeny brought up Project Lead the Way, 21305. That was not originally included in the superintendent's budget, so that's an additional 63,000 that I think I'm taking the philosophy that, you know, we had a good, a very good school system last year, and the students did well. Yes, this is a very, very nice to have, and I personally voted for it. But I think tough times deserve tough questions, and to me, it's a tough question to save that money there. Again, in that same element, I look at 123021, new computer equipment of the Logic Tech Crayons. I think Mr. Brown brought this up in previous meetings. Again, they, we've we've managed to survive without the crayons. They would be a nice to have, and and the technology plan is, has them involved in the in the in the work going forward, but I think we could survive without them for a year. And my last one, which is no one wants to talk about this anymore, but I think we have to, is 10201, PE athletics, two wrestling mats for 18,600. Again, I'm not sure in this environment, we're gonna have, I don't see how we do wrestling in the fall and winter.
Dr. Adley, any comments?
Well, the wrestling mats, you know, the board wanted to put those back in. They are, I guess we were planning to. And whether whether they're, when we get to the sporting season, whether they're actually doing that or not, that that's speculation, but I guess we're still planning for it. The Logic Tech Crayons, you've heard in the in the entry plan, they're up and down the system, teachers and students all talked about the coherence of the technology program and being on the same page with what we're using. These are already in place, which our 10th graders already have these. So they're looking, I don't know why we wouldn't continue to do those, to be honest with you. And the other one was Project Lead the Way. I mean, I would, I would like to keep that. Neither was in the budget. I would like to keep that. I wanted it in the first place, and I couldn't get it in with the with the budget line item, so I recognize that. But if I can find a way to keep that in, I would.
Mr. Brown, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Tara. You know, it occurs to me that through my comments earlier, I forgot or I neglected to thank you, Dr. Adley, and to thank Rich. This is a superior work product. These are enormously difficult decisions that have been hoisted upon us, and obviously, we have to do that. I I hope you and your staff understand that these questions and these propositions for different cuts doesn't come from a questioning of your educational priorities. You're the leader of this district. We have a superior leader, and I wouldn't expect anything other than a full-throated defense of everything that you've put in this budget. So these are all difficult conversations to go through, but don't think for a second, and obviously, this is in public, don't think for a second that we don't believe in you and your abilities and your commitment to our children. So thank you for this work.
I'll say that. Thank you, thank you, Mr.
Mr. Brown, did I see your hand up?
You did. Very quickly, three things I wanted to touch on. Number one, between RC 15, that's 15, and RC 25. I know our tech guys are very busy, but is there anything they can be creative on between those two RCs? For instance, our phone system with the Microsoft free we have, could we roll our phone service into some product that we already have and have efficiencies there? So if there's anything they have created, I would love to hear it. Number two, I keep hearing this idea, I heard it a few weeks ago from from middle school, I heard it from Shirley the other week, and I think Deb's touched on a little bit. With what's going on now and all the unknowns we have, I think the idea was brought by Shelley to stop and maybe not change the school schedule. It's just gonna be too much next year. Seems we're gonna have a lot of remediation. We're gonna have to figure out where people are and sort of retrench a little bit. And so my question is, going through this, we keep coming back to Project Lead the Way. And I think the reason people come to that is not because Project Lead the Way, but because it's new, it's additional, it's new program we're rolling out. And I think there's a question, are there things we could keep status quo? Kind of like we're keeping the change in the school schedule at middle school status quo, because we know there's gonna be a lot of difficult work to do. We don't know what it's gonna look like. Are there things we could roll back that were going to be additional this year? That maybe we should really look at, and maybe we should just, you know, take a year and stop and say, you know, pause. Let's let's see where we are first, and then we can maybe continue with our plans. And then the final thing I would say is, actually, Deb, the technology plan, I would think that's one that argues very much for a pause at this point. I think you touched on it earlier with the cohesion issue across schools and across students and teachers, and I think we're in a very new world here. The teachers have been quickly, you know, forced to learn very quickly how to adapt to new technologies and new teaching methods. I would argue this is a great chance to maybe step on the brakes, stop, let's wait for a year, see where we are, and see if there aren't some efficiencies in different methods we should be using moving forward after this. So again, just following that idea that maybe there are things we wanted to do previously, perhaps maybe we should, you know, slow it up right now, given the set where we are. Thank you.
So if I can say in the, Dave, in the most respectful way, if we had to slow some of these things up and more power to the people who came before me and to this board for being in a position to serve the kids right now, because if we had to slow it up, you would not be in a good position, and it wouldn't look good, and it wouldn't serve our kids well. The Project Lead the Way is not necessarily a new program for the eighth graders. It's just, it's a revision and update on the actual curriculum itself and the materials that they need, or else they're gonna be sort of in-house, which you may say they should, but I wouldn't slow up the technology program that high. I think that's potentially a little bit short sighted, to be honest with you. I think I would keep. Whenever you're talking about, I guess you have to sort of define what you mean by the technology program in terms of which phase of it. If it's maybe it's the ninth grade, and I would not be, I mean, this is, this is not a time for me that I would recommend to slow up the purchase of technology or the access to it or the implementation of the plan. Actually, it would be opposite. And I know we may respectfully disagree on that, but that would be my recommendation on that.
So, oh, go ahead, Dave.
No, I was just saying, thank you. Thank you for your input. I appreciate it always.
So I think unless there's anyone who has any anything new to add to this list. Deb's taking notes, I've taken notes, Dr. Adley's taking notes tonight. I know the administration has. I think I'm gonna kind of leave us on on this issue with this. I think the charge before us was not to affect students and programs if we could. What we've realized is these cuts in some way will. And I think Dr. Adley was upfront about that, and so now we have kind of the arduous task of how to map that out. So I appreciate all these suggestions. Certainly, the board's going through during their work, and the administration can take a look at them. I'll show my hand. I feel pretty strongly that education must continue because kids are ninth graders, and then they're 10th graders, and then they're 11th grader. It's not stopping. We're not restarting them in eighth grade and ninth grade. So my goal as an individual, board members, I go through all these notes, will be to say what keeps Darian School System and its children moving forward, because their next steps are moving forward. And I think if all of us kind of do that, and we regroup next week, we can come up with a prioritization list. I also would, I think we need to think about that pre-buy. I think, as you heard, things with with like Apple, you know, they're only offering their discount for so long, and so we can both save the district $10,000 and keep education moving and deploy educational tax dollars to work. I think I think we can meet all of our goals, but I do think we'll have to come to a consensus so that the administration has enough leeway to move forward by our next meeting. Is that enough time for you? If we have direction by then? Okay. All right, and so if there's nothing left to add, that's kind of our working orders. Mrs. Ritchie?
So I just, I just think a lot of stuff was thrown out there tonight. There's a lot of ideas, but I don't see anything quantified. So people have ideas. If people have numbers or ideas about numbers, that's where I think we need to head with this, because we're throwing everything in but the kitchen sink right now. So I think what we need to do is articulate what you mean by turnover. Articulate what you mean by substitutes. It's great to throw these ideas out there, but quantify it. So maybe next time, people can be ready to quantify their ideas.
So I think we're gonna have to do that beforehand. I think, and maybe board members can quantify if what they're, or can clarify, if what they're doing is asking the administration to go back and scrub and come back with a recommendation, which might be zero or might be $1, that's one thing. But if you have a proposed cut, I think we need to treat this like the night prior to Cut List, where you were, Cut Night, where you put a dollar figure out there, and the administration can tell you whether they can handle it. whether they can handle it or not. If what you're asking is for a general scrub and a general recommendation coming back, that's fine. But we need, we need to kind of treat this like that Cut List night, so we know and the administration knows what they're looking at. Dennis?
Tara?
Sorry.
Sorry, one second, John, Dennis, and then you.
So, so I think Mr. Seeny brought something up that we didn't follow through. So if we do want to cut the freshman sports and/or the eight, the four, the four coaching stipends, can we task the administration to look at what it would be to, to at least cover that difference with a student activity fee? So divide 125,000 divided by 4,000, however many, 1,400 students in the high school, and we come up with a number.
I think the board would have to vote to have a student activity fee or vote that's a concept they want to pursue, or at least take a sense of the meaning.
But I think we would, but that's my point. But it's, it's either that or freshman, if it's that or freshman sports, I think that's a, I think we'd have to put that to a vote as to which one you'd rather lose or have, whichever way you want to say.
Or pre-buy.
$89, Dennis.
$89.
Yeah, or, but Dennis, I think, I think that's where we're going to have to start putting a stake in the ground. Because I think, as you see Dr. Adley's list, he doesn't need to go there if we're aware and supportive of the fact that he's spending the educational tax dollars on education.
It's fair.
Money.
We're talking, we're at, we're being tasked to bring forth ideas. This is an idea to put forth. And whether we voted yea or nay, that's fine. But I think we need to be creative in finding solutions.
I think first, we'll need to define the problem. And that will be defined by what we, what guidance we give the administration. I'm all for creative solutions. I don't have a problem with those. But I think, you know, unless you're saying no pre-buy, and I'd like to charge parents for their kids to do extracurriculars. John?
Just to Mrs. Ritchie's comment, we know the answer. We got to get to one, at least 1.025. So every one of us should have a spreadsheet, a list, if you will, of how we get there. I heard a lot of no's from individual board members. No, I don't want to cut this. And none of us want to do this, but we're tasked.
But John, here's the thing.
Excuse me, let me just repeat my statement.
Let's have John's list, then Deb, then Kim.
I have a list.
So, so, yeah, so we all should be prepared with a list of how to get to that 1.025.
I have a list, and it's Dr. Adley's list. And that's the list that we should all be working off of this, at this point. And I'm in favor of the pre-buy because these are educational tax dollars that have been appropriated to education. And we're going to put it back, almost $1 million, put it back into a general fund that's overfunded by between $6 and $8 million. So is that what the Board of Education is going to do?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't addressing certain things. I just heard a lot of no's from individuals. So I'm interested to see how they're making it up.
Well, but you also heard a lot of yeses saying they would agree to some pre-buying. So, you know, you're, we may disagree on where the yeses are, but, you know, and I agree with Deb. These are dollars that have been taxed for education. Our job is to educate the children of Darien. Pre-buying Chromebooks and technology, to me, is a way better solution than cutting strings or an art teacher or Project Lead the Way. I, you know, I fundamentally disagree. And Dennis, your point on the student activities, that needs its own meaning. I am not prepared to start taking that money and using it and allocating it without a broader discussion, without the community and the people who have fundraised for those dollars, understanding what we're doing with them. I'm really opposed to that. And it also brings up the whole pay-to-play idea. I'm not going there right now in this environment.
So I will say, I do agree that I think I struggle with the idea of like, let's cut the Logitech pens, let's cut Project Lead the Way, let's cut library books, because we want to fund the general fund. I think if there's a way to satisfy both things, both meet our educational needs, which is what we were elected to do, and satisfy the needs of taxpayers, and still, anything left over, go into the general fund, then it's a win all around. I struggle, quite frankly, with the objections to pre-buying at this point in time. That's me, one of nine.
I don't think we took a vote yet on it, so, you know.
There you go.
Quite about this.
Mr. Burke and Mr. Denise?
No, I mean, I'm sorry to be repetitive. I mean, with regard to the pre-buy, and I said when we first brought it up, you know, briefly, at the level suggested and as a concept in general, I think it's, I think it's fair. I don't think it's being disingenuous to the Board of Finance directive. We're the Board of Education. These are educational funds that have been taxed for that purpose. And I don't think that we should use the entire surplus, if you will, for educational needs. I think that there is an amount that should go back to the town in this environment. But I think the pre-buy, as stated, is, is very fair and very defendable.
Any additional comments? Mr. Denise?
I would just say, all, all good points and all good conversation. But, you know, through the course of the evening, I, we, we've heard cut. We've heard, do we defer it? Will we want to bring it back next year? Can we postpone it? I think the thing we have to get our arms around too is continuously looking at efficiencies and looking a little longer term. Take the COVID and some of the points that Jill made and others around, how do we get schools reopened and all that type of stuff? That's almost a separate bucket. But the overall budget is not going to get any easier next year, in my view. So, you know, saying, well, we'll, we'll do it this year, and can we think about bringing it back next year? We have to look at it from how do we continue to deliver an efficient budget and deliver on all those educational priorities? I think we have to keep that in mind and think a little longer term on some of this stuff, too. You cut freshman sports next year, the following year, the economy turns around. Everyone's going to be like, hey, we need to bring this back. So you need to think a little longer term on some of this stuff, too.
Yeah, I'm split on, I think we have to do best with educational activities.
I, if I could just offer that maybe this whole pre-buy conversation, at the end of the day, I, I think I'd love to remind the board that I think that all of us really care very deeply about the school system. Some of us want to spend more money now, and some of us want to hold on to a little more just in case the expenses that come down the pike are just much bigger than what we anticipate.